This meeting of the Margate Planning Board for Thursday, August 25th, 2022 is called to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with every injustice for all.
Roll call, please.
Tom Collins?
Here.
Richard Patterson?
Here.
Michael Cristaldi?
Here.
Jim Gallantino? Margaret Gubernalte?
Here.
Craig Palmisano?
Here.
Stephen Giasecki?
Here.
Remy Pelosi?
Here.
Michael Ruffiu?
Here.
Michael Richmond?
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with due public notice thereof and pursuant to the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Notice of this meeting was advertised in the press and a copy of same has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby advised that should you receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form which informs you regarding the timing of receiving building permits and mercantile licenses. At the end of your case tonight, please see the board administrator to sign the two information sheets. I'd like to hear a motion for approval of the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Rich, use the new agenda for the resolution offers.
I'd like to hear a motion for the approval of decisions and resolutions, number 39, 2022, John Goodman; number 40, 2022, Neil and Karen Model; number 41, 2022, Todd and Melissa Cohen; and number 42, 2022, 15 North Quincy Avenue LLC. Hear a motion?
And that also includes number 43?
I'll second.
Hold on.
That also includes number 43, 2022, Stacy Asbell and Andrew Levin. So now we need a motion.
Oh, I see. Sorry. Motion? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Come on, guys. Somebody make a motion, somebody second. Well, no seconds. Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. First case is Jacob and Johanna Persky.
We're going to swear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The board member. So, Mike, Mike Ruffiu's our new board member. Mike, I gave you the oath. You can just stand up, face me, raise your right hand, and I'll get you sworn in. You can just repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Michael Ruffiu.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States?
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state?
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God?
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear or affirm?
I do further solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will impartially and justly?
That I will impartially and justly.
Perform all duties of the office of planning board member?
Perform all duties of the office of planning board member.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God?
So help me God.
Thanks. You could just sign that. You can sign them both and give them back to me and I'll get them. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. First case, Jacob and Johanna Persky, 333 North Gladstone Avenue, block 507.02, lot 1.01 and 1.02, located in the S-40 zoning district, seeking C-variants relief for sideyard setback and possibly others in order to raise the existing dwelling and construct an addition. Taxes and water payments are current and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLaren, please be sworn in.
Mr. McLaren, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give or be the truth? I do, tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Chairman and Board Members. The report is based on the application of Jacob and Johanna Persky, 333 North Gladstone Avenue, block 507.02, lots 1.01 and 1.02, located in the S-40 zoning district, FEMA Zone elevation eight. So they have, by requirement, BFE plus four. So the bottom or the top of the first floor has to be a minimum of 12 feet, or they could put park from below, and it has to be above that. C-variants in planning and zoning report, this is mildly a hardship variance, but it's basically mainly a substantial benefit variance. Background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinance of City Margate in order to elevate an existing single-family drain drilling and construct an addition. The applicant wishes to elevate high enough to provide parking below, however, since this requires the elevation to exceed baseball elevation plus three, which is state law, all existing non-conforming issues become variances. Elevating to BFE plus three is by right, however, the height required for parking is necessary if the radius more than BFE plus three. Parking below structure is permitted and encouraged as it meets the allowable space defined by FEMA. The lot faces Minno Creek, also known as Mini Creek, and some of the lot area is repairing, which causes some hardship, that the house can't be further back, can't really be moved. And I also want to point out that none of the addition is causing or creating the variance. It's elevating above BFE plus three. State law says anything above that, and existing nonconformities are required to seek a variance. So there are two variances being required and being requested. Documents reviewed on page three, section two, including the plans reviewed by the architect, John Marshall. No waivers have been requested. Set of variances are as follows. Sideyard setback, whereas the minimum required sideyard setback to principal structures is 10 feet, 2.8 feet exist and 2.8 feet is proposed. I presume when this property was developed, the sideyard setback was three feet, so 0.2 inches, that's a three-foot setback. So today it's 10 feet. They're raising above three, that's a variance. Mechanical equipment setback, HVAC condenser, whereas the requirement of setback to the equipment is five feet, four feet, eight inches is proposed. Again, that's to the platform. I presume the equipment itself might actually meet the five-foot setback, but it's safer to request the variance anyway. Again, it's in its existing condition, it's just going to be elevated. Again, no waivers have been requested. Comment? Or they're putting it in the most commensurate spot then. Again, this application would be by right if the structure was elevated to BFE plus three. In order for these variances to be approved, lots 1.02, 1.01 must be consolidated. Is that going to be the case?
Yes.
Okay. The right yard setback is existing nonconforming and due to lift, comes a variance. Lot 1.01 was created from a portion of Fulton Avenue when it was vacated, so half became part of this property. There is an existing stormwater easement, which will be respected in the application on lot 1.01, which will be absorbed by 1.02. And all landscaping, I know Ms. Persky will make sure that all her landscaping requirements will be met. So I have no further comments on this application.
Thank you and good evening. For the record, my name is Bridget Sykes. I'm an attorney with Fox Rothschild, and I represent the applicant, Jacob and Johanna Persky. I have two witnesses with me tonight, Johanna Persky, the owner, and I have John Barnhart as my professional planner. Leo, did you want to swear both of them at the same time?
Yeah, that works. If you want to get us sworn in now. Joanna, just your name and address for the record, John, same, and I'll swear both the end together.
Johanna Persky, 333 North Gladstone.
John Barnhart, 400 North Dover Avenue, Atlantic City, New Jersey.
Each, please raise your right hand. Each swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give tonight would be the truth?
I do.
I do.
And John, who's been before our board, we, Mr. Chairman, I assume we accept his credentials as a planner and engineer?
Yes.
I'll start with Ms. Persky. Very briefly, just describe the purpose of the development and what you're planning.
Sure. So my husband Jake and I, and Jake apologizes, he can't make it tonight, he's working. We bought the house in April of 2009. We bought the house because of the lot. It's 80 by 100. It's beautiful. And in 2011, we had a foot of water in our playroom during Sandy. So we've spent a lot of time considering these plans and how we want to build this home. And the bottom line is, we love our neighborhood. We've weighed the options of moving or going somewhere else, but we love it where we are. And my kids can walk to school and walk to the ball fields. And we'd like to renovate the house so that it's up to modern standards. We're looking for a garage to put our kids' stuff in and central air, which has caused many spousal arguments. So we love where we're staying. We're trying to build it in a way that preserves, you know, the natural beauty of the area and protects our neighbors' privacy. We love our neighbors, and that's why we want to stay where we are. I love to garden, so I promise you, we're going to use native plants as much as possible. We will plant as many trees and shrubs as we can. We will consolidate the lots, as we discussed, and we will also make sure that all fencing is within the requirements.
And just on that point, that was one of the comments in the review letter, that some of the existing fencing approaches onto the neighbor lot. Are you going to be removing all the existing fencing?
Yeah, it's all going to be new.
Okay. That's really all I have for Ms. Persky. Anyone has any questions for her? Mr. Barnhart? Would you just describe the existing conditions of the property and the proposed development?
Sure. As Mrs. Persky identified, the property is an 8,000-square-foot lot, a large lot for the city of Margate, sitting right on Gladstone Avenue, known as 333 North Gladstone. Sitting on the lot today is the dark shaded area that you see here, is their existing single-family home. It does have one existing nonconformity to the current ordinance, and that is the right side setback. The existing building, other than that right side setback, complies entirely with the ordinance, which is kind of unusual for homeless of this age, to not have other nonconformities that we're dealing with. The proposal is to raise the existing home to meet FEMA standards, but to bring it up to a level adequate enough for an eight-foot-high garage at the ground floor. Very standard request on new homes today. And the proposal to elevate the home does not create a height variance for the home, but it does create a sideyard setback variance because, as Bridget pointed out, we are going higher than the maximum provided per state statute with regard to raising existing homes to get them out of harm's way from a flood perspective. So the home is proposed to be raised. There is an addition proposed that will contain both a carport and then living space as well. And there is a deck proposed on the rear of the structure. All of the proposals?
Where's Gladstone Avenue?
Here.
Got it. Got it.
All of the proposed improvements, all the expansion area, all of the deck space, all of those new elements don't trigger any variances whatsoever. The only two variances that are necessary are the existing sideyard setback, because we're taking the existing building and going straight up with it, and because we're exacerbating that side yard, the variance is created. And then the proposal to gain an additional four inches beyond what would be permitted for the HVAC platform, the MEP team looked at it and said, it's a little bit too tight. It's the perfect location for the HVAC, but it's slightly too tight, can we get another four inches on the platform? That's it with regard to variances. The position of this building is interesting. It looks like it's, you know, kind of down and forward on the lot, but the reason for that is because there is actually wetlands in the rear and a buffer required, and then there's a stormwater easement to the northerly side. So the improvements are put in the location they need to be based on the existing constraints of the property. And one other thing I do want to point out is that the shed that is actually in that buffer area is being eliminated. They're now going to have a lot of storage underneath the home, they don't feel like they need it, and it actually does lie within the buffer area, so they do have to eliminate it. As you heard Ms. Persky say, the fence that is currently on adjacent properties will be corrected and will be within the confines of their lot lines. This is, I think, both a C1 and a C2 scenario. C1 under the fact that we have an existing condition, we're trying to raise the property to make it flood compliant, and it would be a tremendous hardship to try to relocate the lot, especially given the easement and wetlands constraints on the property. But I think more so, this is a C2 scenario, where the benefits of the deviation outweigh the detriment. This is a full upgrade to an existing home to keep a great family in the city of Margate, really beautify the site itself, and keep all of their new improvements in total compliance with the ordinance. It's just that existing condition of that right side that they are not able to comply with. So for those reasons, we think the positive criteria are established. And with regard to the two problems of negative criteria, there is certainly no substantial detriment to the public good, with the beautification of the home and the neighborhood only adds value. And with regard to any substantial detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance, again, being able to do everything they're doing, and all they're really dealing with is one existing nonconformity, I think that's a very, very minor request.
John, this isn't the variance, but do you know the approximate square footage of the existing house?
I? I? I think it's like 2,200.
And what's the size of the?
It's 2,208, to be exact.
And the size of the addition? Thanks.
So the total will be 3,555.
It really doesn't apply to this case, but I needed the information for something, so.
And then, John, I just want to confirm. So on the side of the house that's being elevated, there's not going to be any changes to the existing facade, other than new siding, no new windows, no new projections, no new anything to that elevation?
As my understanding, based on the review of the architectural plan, correct.
Okay. So from that perspective, that side of the house will look exactly the same, just at a new height?
Just be higher, correct.
And the AC platform, the location of it, can you just point to it on your plan?
Yep. It's right here in the notch at the back of the building. It is an ideal location for it. It works with the existing layout of the home.
It won't be visible from the street?
Won't be visible from the street. And as Roger mentioned, in all likelihood, the edge of the actual condensing unit will comply with the five feet. The architect just asked for an additional four inches for the platform to make sure that it fits appropriately.
Okay. And can you just talk about the addition of the parking and whether there's parking there currently?
Sure. So the site, while I've been there twice, there's generally on-street parking available in this neighborhood, but the site has never had on-street parking, and they are proposing two off-street parking spaces on the exterior, together with a carport area for parking underneath of the structure. And then they have all that interior garage space for storage.
So there's no existing curb cut or anything there right now?
Correct.
Is it a single-car driveway or a double-car driveway?
It's a nine-foot-wide apron.
19 feet. I'm going to ask a question. John? John, was there any thought to moving, you have two feet eight on the one side of the house, was there any thought during the raise to move the house two more, two feet to the left? Was there a problem to do that?
Well, just structurally, it adds a tremendous amount of cost.
That's what I wondered. How much cost does it add to move a house two feet to the left or right?
Well, I mean, I didn't quantify the value.
So you raise it up, and you take the footings out and put new blockwork in, right under the existing structure?
They're raising it up, they're, yeah, they're, well, I don't know, are they replacing the footings in this case?
They're putting?
That's all. It was just a question if you investigated whether to move it two feet to alleviate the side of the house. No?
They did not propose it.
Okay.
The joists are going the right direction.
Mike, I can't hear you. Could you talk into the microphone? Thanks.
The four joists are going the right direction to be able to make it an easy slide. I don't want to get into, you know, with the other builder, but there would be no variances. I don't know, you know, I would check with your builder first before we get involved in that. But I don't think it'd be a difficult move to slide it over.
Would I just like to even add something?
I know you don't want to add costs, I understand.
No, it's also kind of to preserve the space that my neighbor has on the other side. Like, my neighbor on that side, where the setback is closed, she's fine with it. I'd like to give my neighbor on the other side as much as possible while still getting, I mean, it sounds silly, but I have a vegetable garden in the back, it gets full sun, you know, there's kind of a lot of factors that go into that.
Anything else?
There's more of a farm back there, isn't there? Mosquito farm.
Anything else on the board? Anyone here from the public have any comments or questions? Public portions closed. If there's nothing else on the board, could you read a motion? Leo?
Sure. Just two C variances, one for the sideyard setback. It's currently at 2.8 feet, and it's going to stay 2.8 feet, but the variance is triggered because of the raise above BFE plus three. And then that, I guess, about four-inch setback to the HVAC platform, 4.67 feet proposed, five feet required. We'll note the conditions that they're going to consolidate the lots, and then we'll note anything else in Mr. McLaren's report unless otherwise addressed tonight. And then the applicant, subject any other outside approvals if there is any, and any representations made during the course of the hearing will be followed. So we'll need a motion, a second, and a roll call vote.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Tom Collins?
As far as the hardship in this case, I don't really see a hardship variance in this. But as far as a benefit to the city of Margate, I think you have a really good case. You've got a beautiful property, you're enhancing it, you're improving the neighborhood. Obviously, nobody from the neighborhood even came in to speak against it. I know you have kids in the school system, you're good community people. This is so de minimis, so minor, I just can't see not giving you a vote yes. So I vote in favor.
Richard Patterson?
In addition to what Tom said, I agree with everything he said. You're also creating off-street parking, which is a help to the neighborhood, so I also vote yes.
Michael Cristaldi?
We're going to have another compliant house in Margate. It's been with that two feet, whatever, for so long, I don't think it's bothering anybody. I think it's a benefit to the neighborhood and especially to Margate for flood. I vote yes.
Margaret Gubernalte?
Yes. I see this as minor requests. I think it's a great improvement. The variances are de minimis. I see no detriment to the neighborhood. I'm glad you're getting a garage and central air, and I vote in favor of the application.
Craig Palmisano?
And raising the house is the biggest advantage you have. You're on Mini Creek. High tide comes every six hours. And the parking, alleviate parking underneath, and it's a good thing for the neighborhood. I approve it.
Remy Pelosi?
I concur with the other board members and approve.
And Michael Richmond?
Yeah, I think the benefits far outweigh the detriment, if there is a detriment, because your neighbor didn't come by, so they didn't seem to upset about it. So I'm going to approve it.
The application is approved with seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right. The next case is Christopher and Jody Wilhelm. Are they here? Oh, there's Christopher. Christopher and Jody Wilhelm, 312 North Huntington Avenue, block 510.02, lot 50, located in the S-25 zoning district, seeking C-variants relief for building coverage, sideyard and rear yard setback and possibly others, in order to raise the house and construct a second-floor addition. Taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLaren? Yes. Oh, right. Tom Collins is recusing himself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. Report is based on the application of Christopher and Jody Wilhelm, 312 North Huntington Avenue, block 510.02, lot 50, located in Zone S-25. It's an elevation eight zone, so they're allowed to go to 11 feet to the bottom or provide parking below. C-variants is in planning board zoning report. This is a substantial benefit variance, not a hardship variance. Background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinance of City Margate in order to elevate an existing single-family drilling and construct an addition. The expansion of nonconforming setbacks creates a variances similar to the last application that we just heard. The structure is being elevated to minimum floor elevation required, as off-street parking is already provided and along with an existing detached garage. So unlike the last application, because they are going to BFE plus three, they are expanding the nonconformities with the addition. It's not the lift that's causing it, it's the addition, conversely from the last application. So the zoning chart is on page two, continue on page three, listing the variances, and they are as follows. And again, one variance may be eliminated, but I'll leave that up to the application. The applicant, sideyard setback on the right side, whereas the required minimum sideyard setback to the principal structure is 10 feet, 2.8 feet exists and 2.8 feet is proposed. Again, this reflects the old setback of three feet for the neighborhood back in the day. Sideyard setback combined, whereas required minimum combined sideyard setback to principal structure is 22 feet, 20.8 feet exists and 28.8 feet is proposed. Again, the addition is causing that to be expanded. Sideyard setback projection for the fireplace, whereas required minimum protection for a fireplace in the sideyard is two feet, conditioned on a seven-foot sideyard setback, the setback for the side yard is only 2.8 feet, so that's a variance. Rear yard setback, whereas required minimum rear yard setback to principal structure is 16 feet, which is 20% of lot depth, 12.7 feet exists and 12.7 feet is proposed, again, created by the addition of the second floor at that 12.7-foot setback. Building coverage, whereas the maximum building coverage permitted for properties with 5,000 square feet or more, regardless of what zone you're in, single-family zone that is, 30% is required, 25% exists, and 31.6% is proposed. No waivers have been requested. The comments are as follows, right yard setback is existing nonconforming, and due to the addition becomes a variance. Both C1 and C2 criteria need to be satisfied in this application and the proper testimony. Existing sea trees shall be salvaged and protected, whereas feasible. 37 total shrubs are required. I'm sure all those requirements will be met and confirmed by the applicant. The second-floor addition encroaches into the sideyard setback and may be subject to fire code compliance. Again, that's not for the board's purview, but I just want to put it out there for the applicant to be aware of that case. Again, the fireplace encroaches into the sideyard setback of less than seven feet, and that's a variance, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Mr. McLaren. Members of the board, my name is Chris Ballen, and I represent the Wilhelm here with us this evening, who is their intention, once this house is done, if they have the expansion, they're going to move here, and their daughter is buying their house off at home, she's having kids. So it's going to be a switch, and they're going to be down here when the house is done. It's not one of these cases where it's like, okay, they're going to move down here and retire. Their intention is to be here short. Mr. Ruffiu, welcome. This is similar to the last case, in the extent that the expansion of the vertical expansion creates the variances. We have an old existing right side yard setback of about three feet, we have rear setback, which is a couple of feet efficient. Since the addition is going in the back and on the side, those variances are required. There's a coverage variance of about 1.6%. That's not an expansion of the footprint in any respect. That's a cantilever over the existing front porch. Once you cover any portion of that front porch, that becomes building coverage, so the footprint stays the same. Roger mentioned an outdoor fireplace. Your ordinance regulates fire pits. This is a prefab enclosed fireplace, similar to the one we did on, in fact, on Union Avenue, and the guy didn't tell us it was even there, the big house. But it's a prefab fireplace inset with a wall backing, a floor ceiling. It's much more safe, I'll say, than a firefight with flames blowing or embers blowing, but you'll have to be the judge of that. I don't know, quite frankly, Roger, if it is subject to fire code within the five feet, if it's even allowed at all.
Is this a gas fireplace or a log burn fireplace?
Gas.
Oh.
Gas.
With a glass cover and everything?
Yes. Yeah, it's a, you buy at the store and put it in. This is a good application. I mean, this part of Huntington Avenue has become really nice, both on the ball field side and on this side. In fact, you'll see in the photos that the house right next door is similar to what these guys are doing. It's two stories. This house stays at two stories. You don't need to go to a third story. They stay well within the overall height by about three feet. Landscape will conform now, it's going to conform then. And then there's a nice front yard setback, which easily complies with the block, and it's not going to change. When Craig asked us why we don't slide it over, because it's going to come too close to the garage. It's only two feet from the garage now. It really shouldn't be any closer than a safety factor. Architect is Jack Smith. Jack, your office, you'll swear, and then we'll go through the questions.
Sure. Mr. Smith, just state your name and business address, please.
It's on, it should be on. Hold it down on the bottom. Someone needs to turn it on.
Testing one, two.
I'm sorry, my name is Jack Smith. My primary address for my office is in Gloucester Township, 1344 Chews Landing Road. I also have an office on 1245 West Avenue in Ocean City, and I have another office in Stone Harbor.
Before you accept, Mr. Smith, let me just go through them briefly.
Yeah, just going to get him swearing. Mr. Smith, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
Sure.
Jack, just briefly give us the benefit of your professional experience and license.
I am an architect, of course, in New Jersey, licensed in New Jersey, Delaware, Maryland, Virginia, Pennsylvania. I've been a licensed architect for now 25 years.
Have you fitted before this board before?
Yes, I have, and many others.
And you're familiar with the ordinance? You're familiar with the ordinance?
I am familiar with the ordinance.
We'll accept disqualification.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Jack, if you would briefly tell the board what it is that the Wilhelm's came to you to do and how you've carried out that plan or that design of theirs.
Well, the Wilhelm's came to us and requested that we try to take this. This is an existing one-story rancher, three-bedroom, approximately 1,300 square feet. Pretty small. Their intentions were to move into this, and they, as Chris briefly mentioned to you, they're going to make this their primary residence. Right now, they're going to be trying to set this house up for their future and living here from this point forward. So the idea was to be able to expand it, to make it comfortable for them, to bring it into more of a current situation or current codes, and certainly meet all the new current flood FEMA requirements.
House has one bathroom right now?
The house has one bathroom.
In this addition, of course, we'll add another bathroom?
Yes.
Jack, if you want, and what did you design? Tell us about the second floor and how you laid it out.
Well, I don't know. I'm hoping you can see that, and when we talked about, you know, adding some of the non-conformity as far as the setbacks go, the Wilhelm's had a vision of keeping this or designing this into a Cape Cod and trying to keep the front low-profile, but adding a few dormers to accentuate the front. And as you can see, there was some symmetry going along with this. If you can imagine losing a portion of that right side because of the setback, it would drastically affect the simplicity but elegance of this home. So that was the reason that we had set up this house the way we have. Also, they have that porch that is pre-existing that continues all the way across. And again, just trying to work off of that and maintain this symmetry and the beauty of this simple elegant house, you know, more of a modern Cape Cod here.
So, Jack, the design at the second floor level, the new design, that's in an effort to not have sheer wall in the front, but to have some architectural breaks or interest?
Yeah, we were looking for not just one long, flat roof, or not flat, but just one long, empty roof up there by projecting out the dormers. Again, you give some different aesthetic value to that, delineating the front and creating interest in the elevation.
And that projection at the second floor creates the variance for coverage, which is about 1.6% over the 30% permitted?
That is correct, because we're trying to project out the front of the roof. In order to project out the front of the roof and still get a reasonable window in there, and even at that, you can see these windows weren't exaggerated. They're reasonable in size. So we projected those out the front of the house far enough to, you know, again, get a reasonable window.
And the front yard setback conforms, and there's no infringement in respect to those improvements?
The front yard setbacks conform in both the porch and the building setback.
It's talking about where we had to go up. And obviously, structurally, it's better to use the existing structure to rest the second floor on.
That's correct.
What variance has that created since you've chosen to do that for this design?
Again, maintaining that, you know, that exterior wall and bringing that straight up. We also did that in the rear, which is also part of the variance here, where, again, it's just, it's better construction, it's safer, and it's more structurally sound to extend that wall straight up. For me, as far as structure and dealing with wind speeds and things like that, I can create my sheer wall that travels straight down to the foundation.
Existing garage will stay, and there is conforming parking. Is that right?
There's actually more than what's required as far as parking goes here.
The house will conform with FEMA requirements in Margate flood hazard ordinance?
Yes, we're in Design Flood Eight, and we're atop a block is 11, 11 and some change.
Lift is less than two feet.
The left is about 1.33.
So fortunately, despite recent articles and certain newspaper, this isn't going to be a house that has 15 steps up to the front porch. It's going to be like a normal.
It's going to look more of a normal structure because of the limited, you know, steps. We'll have to add a few more, of course, two more risers.
It certainly won't be out of character with this neighborhood.
No, not at all. And just to point out a fact, too, the houses to the left and the right are both two-story houses, which really dwarfed this house right now. And their setbacks are pretty close. They're within roughly five feet on each side.
With respect to deposit criteria under the Land Use Act, we spoke about, obviously, making the house flood compliant. You also believe that the act has advanced by the aesthetic enhancement and compatibility with the neighborhood in this project?
Absolutely. Again, it was, this house was dwarfed by the other two houses, bringing up to this height, giving a little bit more height in the roof. Again, it's going to make it feel more conforming to the neighborhood.
Do you then think that the variance, we have a thought about the fireplace, which confirmed, I had a conversation with Mr. Patterson, about what do you intend to use as the gas fireplace on the porch and how that works, and whether or not there's any hazard with that being there? That's the concern.
As you can, this type of fireplace is something that you could put in your living rooms, okay? It's basically a prefab gas fireplace. They're, they have a glass front to them. They're remote-controlled in most cases. They have a, I mean, they can't be any safer than putting it into your living room.
It's not throwing embers or throwing ash.
They're not throwing embers. There's no sparks. You know, will still meet the requirements, as mentioned, about the fire rating on that wall, which continues along that side. So that'll meet the one-hour rating as required by code. You know, I don't see any detriment to that fireplace being there.
In light of the fact that the footprint stays the same, do you think the variance that we're requesting for the setbacks, fireplace, and coverage can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good?
I believe so. Again, it's a pre-existing condition. I know we're extending it slightly, but again, we're not doing it as a full two-story front either. Again, we tried to minimize that by limiting the second floor to the back of the property. So it really doesn't extend out to the front.
So coupled with a large setback, reducing the, what is it, the massing and the volume of the structure on the street?
Yes, we're reducing the massing on the street.
So tying into that, do you think that variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and the zoning ordinance and master plan?
Absolutely.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, the board members. Jack's here, and the Wilhelm's are here for questions.
I get it. It's a legitimate question. It's not a criticism. It's not a comment. Wouldn't it be easier with the substantial addition you're doing to tear it down and start from scratch?
That was.
Money-wise, whatever.
Mrs. Wilhelm and I talked about that, and she said, in the long run, she thinks, they think, with the builder, this will be more cost-effective. They hope. But we had that conversation.
Okay, we go through this on a daily basis. I do a lot, a lot of homes in the shore properties and all like that. And the bones of this house are very good. The structure is very good. There's no, you know, we're not seeing anything that's, you know, going to cause us, you know, an exact, you know, and a lot of cost as far as the existing structure. So by able, by being able to save that, they're going to save, of course, a lot of cost. And of course, you look at the cost of materials and the products that are out there today, it's made much worse.
I don't think it applies here. I like this project. But what happens, and this house is getting close, is it's all done to save the footprint.
It's not a big footprint.
Huh?
It's not a big footprint.
You're saving the two, you're saving the two-foot side yard. I'm not against it. I'm saying that is what has been happening sometimes. I don't see that happening here, but that's the point of my questioning.
This is a project.
It's only a two-story house. You do have a big wall right real close to your neighbor, but I think the fact that it's a two-story house and from what you've just told me, I don't have a problem with it. But that was the purpose of my questions, that people do that just to keep the footprint, even if it costs them more money.
This project is dollars and cents. It's not one of those, we can do, you know, we can do whatever. It's not.
Okay. No, you've completely satisfied me.
And also, thus perchance, if something happened where you got into it, you know, you realized that you couldn't raise it, then you couldn't, you realize you couldn't tear it down and just bolt it in there with that.
No, understood.
You have to come back to the board.
I'm going to start over.
Or not come back to the board. Right, yeah, okay.
Anything else on the board? Anyone here from the audience? Any questions, comments? Public portions closed. There's nothing else on the board. Leo?
Okay. It's a sea variance application for the following variances. Side yard setback on the right side, 2.8 feet, or 10 feet required. The combined side yard setbacks at 20.8 feet, or 22 feet required. The side yard setback to the fireplace, basically need a five-yard side yard setback to that, and they're 2.8 feet. Rear yard setback is 12.7 feet, or 16 feet required. And building coverage is at 31.6%, or 30% is the permitted maximum. Just note the standard conditions, anything in Mr. McLaren's report, any outside approvals to the extent necessary, and any representations made by the applicant during the course of the hearing.
I'll make a motion. Richard Patterson?
Well, as I just stated, all my concerns have been satisfied. It's a two-story, fits in with the other two stories in the neighborhood. It's going to be a big improvement. I don't see any detriment here, and I approve the application.
Michael Cristaldi?
Well, we got another compliant house for the city, which gets our rating better. I don't see any detriment to it. I'd say good luck with the project. I approve.
Margaret Gubernalte?
I agree with the other board members. This is a good application. It's a nice two-story home, flood compliant, fits into the neighborhood beautifully. I see no substantial detriments, and I approve the application.
Craig Palmisano?
Yeah, they're all existing non-conformities, and I agree with the other board members. I approve.
Remy Pelosi?
I also agree with the reasons given by the other board members, and I approve.
Stephen Gesacek?
Yeah, I think saving this house and stopping some of these massive houses that are being built, I think, is in our benefit as compared to what it could be. So I approve.
Michael Richmond?
Yeah, I'm glad that you're not in this, on this project, doing the parking underneath, because I think that would, you know, raise the house to a height that would be maybe not in, with the rest of the neighborhood, so.
The application is approved with seven in favor and zero opposed.
Next case, Piranha Builders LLC. Tom Collins is back for this case. Piranha Builders LLC, 114 North Monroe Avenue, block 331, lot 414, located in the MF zoning district, seeking sea variance relief for left-side yard setback, right-side yard setback, total side yard setback, and possibly others, in order to construct a new single-family home. Taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you. Thank you, board chairman, board members. The, this report is based on the application of Anthony Piranha Construction, 114 North Monroe Avenue, block 331, lot 414, Margate City, New Jersey, multi-family zone, FEMA zone elevation nine. Again, they're allowed to have parking below with two stories above, and that's what they're proposing. The background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the City of Margate in order to construct a new single-family home in the multi-family zone. And that is undersized for lot area, for lot area and lot width, but the site supports a single-family residence as per density requirements. The site is located on the western side of Madison Avenue between Mama and Winchester Avenues, Monroe Avenue, I'm sorry. The site currently contains a structure that is non-flood compliant and also front-loaded on a property with minimal front yard setbacks as per the survey. Several variances are requested, and some of them are a result of the narrowness of the existing lot width. Also due to the width, only two stories are permitted above parking. This is both a hardship variance and a substantial benefit variance due to the narrowness of the lot. Zoning chart is on page two. We're in a multi-family zone, continued on page three. Documents reviewed and plans reviewed on page three. Section three are the variances identified. One is minimum side yard setback on the right side, whereas a minimum side yard setback for lots less than three feet wide is five feet, 3.5 feet is proposed. Same thing in the right side or the left side, whereas a minimum side yard setback for lots less than 40 feet wide is five feet and 3.5 feet is proposed. And one waiver has been requested for a copy of an area map showing all lots within 200 feet of the property. Again, I think that can be waived as all of the properties have been notified within 200 feet, and it's been part of this application and certified by the tax assessor. Again, lot ratings should be from the rear of the property towards the street. Make sure no runoff goes on in our neighbors' properties. The builder of this property has actually done a pretty good job in maintaining that proper drainage. No easements are shown. And that's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Patterson. Ladies and gentlemen, Eric Goldstein on behalf of the applicant. With regard to this application, this is a classic hardship. We've got a 25-foot-wide lot, which on your tax rolls is a buildable lot of record. What's there now, I'm sure you all went out to take a look, is a horribly overgrown lot with bamboo and all kinds of other odd growth. The house is not flood compliant, has zero off-street parking spaces, and has been pretty poorly maintained for a number of years. The existing side yard setbacks at the house are unobtainable. The surveyor could not figure them out because of the amount of bamboo and other growth. He estimated them to be two and a half on one side and three on the other. But for those of you who are there, good luck. It's a mess. So the proposal is tear down the existing house, and, you know, we know the board's particularly careful about side yard setback on smaller lots. But based upon the extreme narrowness of the lot and the fact that it's a buildable lot of record, the applicant is seeking one and a half feet of variance on each side. Of note, in Mr. Lolio's plan, the house is three feet below maximum height. We can only go two stories above parking, but the applicant decided to go two stories above, but not max out the height. We're over on landscape coverage, way over on front landscape coverage. We meet or exceed all of the other bulk requirements, but the lot itself, with the exception of the three and a half feet, is just too narrow to support a house with five-feet setbacks. That would give a 15-foot-wide house, which Mr. Lolio is going to testify to in a minute, creates some problems. Most importantly, we're getting rid of a non-flood compliant structure. The new structure will be completely FEMA compliant, three parking spots where none exist. So with that having been said, Bob, if you don't mind stepping up and grabbing the mic.
Sure. Mr. Lolio, just your name and address for the record, please.
Robert Lolio, 219 Bellevue Avenue, Hamilton, New Jersey.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give tonight for the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
We accept discredentia since he's been here a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Just walk us through the house that you've designed. Obviously, we're going to look at what's there now, which is perhaps not so nice compared to what you've designed, what you've designed, which is very, very nice. And we're going to have to justify the three and a half feet on each side versus the five. So walk us through that, please, Bob.
So the current, the current design is two stories over a parking level. So in theory, it's three stories total. The first, the first floor is the main kitchen dining living room level with a dent off the rear. And then the second floor contains four bedrooms. And there's two bedrooms in the middle, one in the front, one in the back. It's, it's a fifth, it's an 18-foot-wide house. If we met the setbacks, it would only be 15-foot wide, which is a pretty narrow house in order, with the length of the lot and the narrowness of the building, we assume that it would be a better advantage to go to 18-foot wide, ask for a foot and a half on each side. Advantages to that are, it gives me room for a stair, a hallway. And as you can see, these two bedrooms, they're pretty small. If we went down, we'd almost lose two bedrooms. It would almost be like unusable tough space to utilize with a 15-foot-wide house. And the length of the building is, it's pretty long. So the other advantage is, every time, every time we go a foot wider in a heavy wind storm, the wider the house with the length, it's a little more structurally sound during a hurricane. It makes it easier to resist the wind. 15-foot-wide house, three stories tall, and very long, it would wreck. So the wider always helps in a structural standpoint.
You're two stories over parking, not two and a half, which we can't go.
Correct.
And the only variances we're seeking are for side yard setbacks, and is your professional opinion that this design, being three feet wider, increases the safety of the residents of the house once it's built, because the house is more structurally sound?
Correct.
Is it also your testimony that, based upon your design of the house, you meet or exceed all of the other bulk requirements except for side yard setbacks?
Correct.
In your professional opinion, could you conceive of any negative that could be associated with this design if the board saw a fit to grant the application?
I don't see any negatives.
And to the extent someone could conceive of a negative, would the benefits of this design greatly outweigh any such negative?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, this is your typical Margate, 25-foot-wide lot house. The board has approved numerous houses like this in the past. It's got enough room, three and a half feet on each side for first responders, and it's safer by making it just a few feet wider.
And you meet the parking requirements, right?
We exceed the parking. Two spaces are required, three spaces are, and we're going from zero now to three. So not only do we meet it, we're increasing the parking off-street considerably from what's there now, which is zero. And the house there now, I'm sure when everyone saw it, it's just, it's a debacle. There's no other way to describe it. So you're getting rid of a debacle, you're getting a new, brand-new design, enough room for your first responders on the side, and we would rest subject to calling Mr. Lolio again-
I just wanted to, I just wanted to point out that we're 1% under the building coverage requirement even with exceeding the setbacks, and we're like 2.9% over on total lot coverage.
Um, what is the total length of this building? The actual building itself, not the deck?
Building itself is 76 feet, four inches.
So there's a deck in the back, then?
That's not including the deck.
Okay. Reason I ask, there's a provision in the ordinance, a design standard, if a building can't be more than 80 feet in total length. So if you're at 76, you're not, that would be a design waiver.
Not including the decks.
Not including-
That's not including the deck, right, 76 feet.
So we would rest subject to answering board questions if you have any.
Anybody on the board? Go ahead, Steve.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Steve.
I don't want to be shut down on this, but, um, how do you fix a pool if it needs repair?
How do you what? I didn't hear-
How do you, if you have a pool failure within my house like that, how do you get machinery back there to fix it?
I don't have an answer to that, other than that's a construction issue.
Just a repair pool.
You'd have to go through the garage and-
They would, they would have a pump, in which they pump the gunlight anyway, and they, you know, have to have an 80-foot hose or whatever they would do.
It would probably be easier to go through the garage and the back doors than through the side yard.
Yeah. These are just things that are starting to pop up in my head.
I think with part of the design problem is that you're enclosing the whole bottom, making it into a usable space. And if that was left open with pilings like you would see in any other town, then you'd be able to get in and out of there all you want, right?
But why are you going to, why are you going to do that for, who cares?
But the point is, they don't use it for parking. They're trying to stack three, four cars in there, and then they're going to put, they're not going to use that.
They can use it-
They put it on the plan, and it complies-
They can use it for parking, they can use it for storage, they can use it for access.
Well, there's actually a veranda, there's a whole open veranda, which is pretty significant.
I saw that.
It's, you know, 20 feet of open veranda space.
But if there's no walls around that, then you'd see it was being used for parking, you would see that it's there for space, and you would have egress for the whole property. And that would justify, given the variances on the, on the house.
But with all due respect, Mr. Collins, that's not a requirement in your ordinance or any-
I'm saying it's a requirement, but we could make it a condition if we wanted to, so that you can get your variance, so you can build your house.
I, I would respectfully disagree with that, but-
I'm sure you would, you presenting the case.
I, I don't think you can dictate the design standard, because in your suspicious mind-
It's not a design standard, it's an egress standard, and all I'm saying is that if it was left open, you would have plenty of egress, and you wouldn't have any problems, and you'd see-
Are you suggesting we build a house on piling that sticks up out of the ground?
You can build it on concrete block, you could do anything you want, yeah.
You can leave it open with no doors?
Well, this, this, this wide, this narrow of a house and the length of it, I wouldn't recommend building on piling, because you'll, you'll feel the racking of the house and the sway.
What's that word?
Aesthetically, is that what we-
Swaying?
Swaying.
Okay.
You'll feel it.
I'm just going to respectfully dis-
Would you like to do that, Mr. Goldstein?
As I said, I know Mr. Collins knows what he's doing. I think in this case, I would just respectfully say, we're going to stick with the design.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, I'm going to open it up for public portion. If anyone's here from the public with any questions or comments?
Yes.
Okay. Just come up, state your name and address, and then wait to be sworn in.
Norman Levine, 119 North Monroe, directly across the street.
Mr. Levine, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now you can speak.
My biggest concern with the building of the house across the street is, there is one parking space in front of the house. When you remove that parking space, we're going to lose three or four on that street, because there actually is two other parking spots on either side of the front of that house. And putting three cars on the driveway is going to block my driveway egress, because once you put cars there, you can't get in and out because it's a narrow street. And there's a huge tree, I'm assuming you're tearing that down in the front?
The lot's only 25-foot wide.
I understand.
Parking spot is 18, so.
I don't know how you're going to-
What we're losing, we're actually putting more on-
Here, on the, on the driveway, but I'm sure that I have guests, and we just don't have enough parking space. I mean, and I realize that it is a, is a lot that you have to build on, but there's a huge tree, I don't know if you're tearing that down in that, up front.
Where's the tree? Is that on the governor's strip, or is it on the property?
It's so hard to tell, so many values, it's-
You can't tear it down if it's on the city property. If it's on your lot, you can tear it down. We don't recommend it, but-
We don't know, it's the-
Well, you'll have to find out.
Well, of course.
Yeah.
Well, if it's in front of their driveway, they'd kind of like to take it out.
Well, if it blocks that, but they, they, no, they can't, Craig, they need a permit. And that permit will decide whether that can happen or not.
I think we're getting a little far afield of what we're here for, which is variance, the two side yard setbacks, the trees and the design standards, again.
Right.
I don't know if that's for tonight, or for an issue of the building-
No, I understand, and so they, they meet the parking requirements, so-
I, I realize that, I'm just making a verbal complaint that, you know, it's really-
You are welcome to say whatever you want.
It's a, it's a small street, there's, in the summer, from, you know, May 15 through the end of the summer, there's really no parking, and, you know, just in the, in the winters, we don't really, really care, but in the summer, it's kind of tough to just to get in and out of the driveways, between a telephone pole and blocking our drive, it doesn't matter, anyway, that's my complaint.
If there was a parking variance, we could turn it down, but we can't turn it down when they meet the parking. But I totally understand your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Public portion's closed. Leo, would you read it?
Sure. Again, a C variance application for the new proposed home. The variances are a side yard setback on each side, on the right side and the left side, three and a half feet's proposed, five feet's required. There's a waiver request, a checklist waiver request from that area map submission, and then the conditions, again, will note anything in Mr. McClellan's report unless otherwise addressed, any, subject to any other necessary approvals, and the applicant will comply with any representations it made during the course of the hearing.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Tom Collins?
Robert, you did a really nice job, it's a nice design, but when I went by that property and I saw that house and saw the lot filled up-
Who's Robert?
Just a wiki. Oh, I'm reading the raw application, sorry. Sorry, Bob.
Okay. I just, I just, I, it just doesn't fit. And I voted for them in the past, but I think we really need to look at our standards, and it doesn't matter what our standards are, I don't think that that deserves to get a hardship variance for two and a half feet. You can build without the side yard variances, so you can still build a house, so it's not like we're keeping you from doing something, but I just, I just don't see it, so I vote no.
Richard Patterson?
If I had my druthers, I'd turn every one of these things down, but I don't have my druthers. This, the side yard setbacks they're proposing are actually larger than most of the other ones that we've granted on 25-foot lots, and I thank you for that. I think it's a foot bigger than the last one, than, than what we did. I also was unaware of the sway factor, or whatever you called it, but I know from speaking with builders that if it was built open on the bottom on pilings, that there would be a lot of sway with the length of that building. So I have been informed by that of, of the safety factors. It can only be two stories, but just the fact that it is only two stories, and I think, from what I've seen and the builders I've talked to, I don't think a 15-foot house is buildable, it's not my expertise, but I don't think we can limit you to something that can't practically be done, so I approve the application.
Michael Cristaldi?
If it were built on pilings, I wouldn't be able to live there, I'd be seasick every night. I can't frame on the third floor anymore when it's on pilings. So these bedrooms are only nine foot six. I think it's really a definite hardship on it, so I approve the application.
Margaret Gubernalte?
I see this as a hardship as well, because of the narrowness of the lot. I think it's the best use of what you can do with this piece of property. What exists there now is terrible. I've seen other 25-foot lots, there's a couple around the corner that Mr. Baglevo has done that look great, they're beautiful. So I think the two side yard variances are de minimis, I think the benefits outweigh the detriments, and I approve the application.
Craig Palmisano?
I think it's chancy buying a 25-foot property. You know you have to come to the board for a variance, because we want five feet. And the past couple houses, we've granted three and a half feet, and I'm living with that. I don't like it, but I'm living with it. I want five feet, but what are you going to do? Have a 15-foot house? I can't see it. But I really want five feet, but I can't have it. And I've, I've approved other projects with three and a half feet, and I approve this one.
Rami Pelosi?
I agree with the reason stated on the record by Ms. Gubernalte, and I approve.
And Michael Richmond?
Yeah, there's a house there already, so there's already been a house built on the lot. I think that it is a hardship, you can't have a 15-foot house. I am a builder, and I agree with Mike, that to build a 15, what are, 18-foot, what are, 18-foot house on pilings would just be really structurally, you'd have to almost get bracing underneath the house to keep it from rocking, and then you couldn't have your parking, and, you know, people would be banging their heads into it, because I've built houses like that over the bay. So I, I think, I approve.
The application is approved with six in favor and one opposed.
Thank you all, and thanks for the spirited debate. It's always good to get your input, so thank you all.
All right, for this next case, Mr. Collins is recusing himself.
Good night, General.
Ms. Gubernalte is recusing herself, so we will proceed. The case is Stephen Baglevo, 9708 10 Ventnor Avenue, block 131, lot 11, located in the C2 zoning district, seeking minor site plan approval, D variance relief and C variance relief for retail parking requirement, density, height of building, residential parking requirement, and possibly others, in order to construct a proposed mixed-use structure. Taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McClellan?
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board Members. My report is dated July 27, 2022, for the application of Stephen V. Baglevo, 9708 9710 Ventnor Avenue, block 131, lots 5 and 11, located in the C2 zoning district. Required first floor is a elevation, or FEMA zone is elevation 10. C variances major, major site plan approval, preliminary and final, D variance for density. Planning and zoning report, substantial benefit and increase in density variance, which is shown on my report, page one. Background is as follows, the applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate in order to construct a new mixed-use development, which was occupied by a commercial medical office and has been raised with the entire lot being cleared of all improvements. Also includes the adjacent site, which is a, the Marvel and Tower store, which is still intact, and I believe that the lots are going to be consolidated to form one lot. The site is located within the C2 or commercial zone two, which permits residential above ground floor, but does not permit residential use on the ground floor where commercial use is required. Mixed-use projects would be the residential use above the commercial use, and is subject to the multi-family or MF zoning dis, density requirements of 19.6 dwelling units per acre. The intent of permitting residential use above commercial or mixed use is to have residential use as a secondary use, while the commercial use is the primary use. The applicant, the application by definition is a major site plan. Page two is the zoning chart. Again, just one comment, per zoning schedule, B, B-2, B as in boy, mixed-use projects shall comply with MF density standards and all applicable standards in the C-zone, meaning the C2. Zoning chart continued on page three. Section two of page three is the documents reviewed. Also included in that is a major site plan engineering review by Remington and Vernick Engineers, July 19, 2022. Plans reviewed, located on the bottom of page three. The following variances are required. Density, where, whereas 19-point dwelling, 19.6 dwelling units per acre is a maximum density required, or six units. Zero units exist, this is all residential, zero units exist, and 43.4 dwelling units per acre, or 14 units, is proposed. Building height, whereas the maximum permitted building height is in the C2 zone is 30 feet from first floor, or 34 feet from the sidewalk, less than 34 feet exist, and 36 feet is proposed. For both buildings requiring two variances, one per building. The variances are classified as C variances due to less than 10% increase, or less than 10 feet over the allowed. Again, my opinion on building height in the C zones is not up to date with the FEMA requirements, so my opinion, that, that building height variance is not that big of a deal. Parking residential, whereas it requires parking as per RSIS, per garden apartments is 1.8 spaces per unit for a total of 25 spaces. Zero spaces for residential exist, because no residential exists, and 15 spaces are proposed, so a variance of 10 spaces is required for both buildings. Parking for commercial, whereas commercial parking requires one space for every 200 square feet of floor area, which would be 30 spaces, 23 spaces exist, and zero spaces are proposed for commercial use. So a parking variance of 30 spaces for a commercial is required. Signs, monument sign, whereas monument signs are not permitted, and one is proposed at 75 square feet, there are no size requirements for a monument sign, but the monument sign is proposed. Waivers requested, checklist items, see engineer's report. Again, we'll, we'll have to go through that, and at this point in time, I just want to turn it over to the applicant.
Been a long time coming, Mr. McClellan, so thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, Eric Goldstein, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Baglevo, who was standing behind me. Just by way of background, we had a full, formal presentation before the board, prior to the board voting, we decided to table that. At that point, we had two residentials over a mixed-use building, which the board really didn't love, and Mr. Baglevo didn't love. He came back with a redesign of the plan, which was substantially heavy on commercial, but it also had a fair amount of residential. We were prepared to present that last month. The board did not have a quorum, and at that time, we couldn't go forward as a D variance, because we didn't have enough voting members. We had four, tonight we have seven, and Mr. Manos will certainly guide the board regarding its duty, whether this becomes a C variance or a D. So we're prepared to go forward tonight, but to my amazement, and he's going to talk in a second, Mr. Baglevo has further lessened the density of this development by a revision to the plan, which changes the unit count substantially. So rather than having me say what Steve's going to say in a second, I'm going to ask Mr. Manos to swear him in, and Steve's going to describe where we wound up with this project, and I think there are a lot of members of the public here who probably are initially curious as to what's happening, and I think when they hear what Steve has to say, this will be more, much more pleasing than they're expecting. So everybody, hold tight. No sighs, no booing, just relax. All right, Steve, if you don't mind getting sworn in.
They don't, they don't look too scary.
Okay. Mr. Baglevo, just your name and address, and I'll get you sworn in.
Stephen Baglevo, 9600 Atlantic Avenue, unit 713, Margate, New Jersey.
And please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thanks.
So you know this project better than anybody.
Stephen Baglevo, 9600 Atlantic Avenue, unit 713, Margate, New Jersey.
And please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give of the truth?
Yes.
Thanks.
So you know this project better than anybody. Can you walk us through where we were?
Would you use a mic, Eric?
Yeah, coming off the call. If you could just walk us through where we were, I'm not contagious, so, and where we are now, so you can talk into that.
So we, we presented ourselves in May, as, as Eric explained. We heard what this committee had to say in reference to our designs, and we decided to pull our application. We came back in July, reapplied, came back in July. We fell short on voting capabilities, which was fine with us, and, and we moved forward to the point where we're now. But in that time period, from our original design to where we are today, even just a few days ago, speaking with members of the committee, Roger, my significant other, lawyers, engineers, architects, I made the decision to bring down our unit counts and bring us more in compliance with what the requirements are or, or are allowed there. In doing so, we've brought this project in compliance with the residential parking, so we wouldn't need a variance for the residential parking. In addition, we would have three or four additional spaces available to be used for the commercial location. I know, I know it's been a long and tough journey. I'm a little bit hard-headed. I, I really don't dislike anyone here, except Palma. No, I'm just kidding. Who could hate Palma?
I think he meant me.
Yeah, I meant Roger. Close. So I'll let these gentlemen explain our redesign. I think it works out well for that site. Keep in mind, this is our first entry area into Margate from Longport. I'm very eager to develop this area and in addition to renovate the, the Margate Marvel facility. We're no longer gonna have units above the Margate Marvel, but we're gonna do a renovation, so it looks similar to the other structure that we're gonna show you here. So it's all, looks as one complex, Margate Gardens. So we're, we're proposing six units instead of 14 single one, one-bedroom units.
Nothing over the ground?
Nothing over the ground.
So no variance for density?
Correct.
Which is why I'm gonna respectfully, Mr. Patterson, ask Mr. Manos, and this is important for the vote, that we believe this is a C, not a D. So we don't need a supermajority. We need a majority of the voting members, four, not five.
I don't know that. I'd have to hear from Mr. Manos.
Well, I-
I confirm it with the six units. It is not a density variance anymore.
Not a density variance. Now, how-
Provided that the lots are consolidated.
And they will be.
Okay. And then I guess, do we need to hear a little more, more testimony? I mean, we have seven members, so it's whether you're gonna need five or four.
That's exactly right.
As to residential on the ground floor?
I believe that the-
There's no residential on the ground floor.
Right.
Okay. Then if that, if that's the case, and there's no density variance, then it, then it would be-
There's no D for use, there's no D for density.
There's no D for use, no D for density. It would be a C variance application.
So all the members who are voting would vote, we would need a majority of the seven members?
Unless something changes during the testimony. Yeah, that as, as, if no D variance is required, and from what I can see, that's now correct.
I don't have to call Tom back?
Well, Tom, Tom left, but-
No, I, I think what you've got with Mr. Ruffey, now we have enough, I mean, this is nice.
Sure, if you have a full board.
I'm, I'm good to vote with this board as constituted, so we're gonna proceed, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not public portion yet, but you can say whatever you want. A public portion.
May I proceed with testimony?
Yes.
To Patterson, okay.
Oh, sure. Just your name and address again for the record.
In the microphone. Don't get too close, Eric has a call.
I did go to the doctor, and he said I'm not contagious, so.
And also, there, there was a prior, prior application that was pulled, and you refiled, and you were, came at last meeting. We didn't have a quorum, now you're here. So the fact that one or more board members may have not been at these prior meetings is, is, shouldn't affect this application. This is essentially the first testimony you're giving on this.
Correct, because the application that was ultimately not presented in July is what we're doing now with the modification.
Correct.
Everything's the same, other than the significant decrease in units. I can't stress that enough. We're going less than half of what was on the prior application. And that's, as Steve said, it's not just talking to people, it's getting a feel for the community, what they want, what people can tolerate, what would be the best for everyone. And I think we shouldn't discount that. We've spent about five months working with the community on what we're trying to do now, and I think we have the plan that we're ready to vote on at some point tonight.
Could you just run over what we have left? What are we voting on?
So it would be, as Roger pointed out, a waiver for the commercial parking completely. We're not seeking any parking commercially. It would, well, we have enough, but we're not, we're still under. So we're receiving, seeking a waiver for the commercial parking. Height, which we're gonna talk about in a little bit. We're consolidating the lots. I think that's it.
That's it.
And the, oh, the monument sign, the 75-square-foot monument sign.
Okay. Proceed.
All right. Are you sworn in?
Okay, just your name and address for the record.
Joe Slaton, 20 Lawrence Avenue, Barrington.
Okay, Mr. Slaton, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give of the truth?
I do.
Okay. And I know we've recognized him in the past. I believe so. I'll leave it up to you, Eric.
Yeah, just very briefly, just keep it back. You're licensure.
Yeah, I'm licensed since early 90s. Been here for the last few years.
Okay, well, qualifications.
Walk us through the new design and what-
So, so for the new member who hasn't seen this before, I'm just trying to figure out where to start.
Just pull up any of this.
Yeah, I'll just start with a site plan. Just, the Marble Works building's on the corner, and the proposed building is zero lot line, which is in compliance.
You could stand up if you want.
No, I'll bring it over when, when he's done. Is that big?
Yeah. So zero lot line, which is, which is permitted on the front and the side. We're maintaining the back area with the, with the, is up, sorry, Dan? Thanks, John. The back area has a grass area with a 10, no, I'm sorry, 5 and 1/2, 5.16 on the rear over the 5 minimum, and we're maintaining the portion of the hedge grow on the side at, at 5 and 1/2. There's gonna be a, a trash and a, and a bike enclosure on, in that strip on this side. The existing Marble Works is to remain, but the, the change is gonna be simply elevation upgrade.
A renovation to match the other, the other structure.
So it looks like one cohesive aesthetic look.
We're so confused on what side, what.
So here's the Margate Marvel tile.
Okay.
Here's Ventnor Avenue.
Okay.
This holds for the remain. We're gonna do a major renovation.
Okay.
And make it look larger and more southern style like this is gonna look like, I'm gonna show you shortly.
And what is, is that gonna be, is that gonna be?
This is gonna be commercial only.
All right, excuse me. We, we can't do this. There's a time for, there's a time for public portion, and you'll have plenty of time to ask questions and go over it, but at this point, he's in the middle of his testimony, so we have to, that's okay. I'm just, I'm not trying to cut you off. You'll have your time.
Let's, let Joe continue.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Wants to explain it, and he will to the people, but we need to at least have Joe finish up, so.
So the first floor is commercial on both, both buildings, and the, the majority of the footprint is commercial. The parking, I believe, is what, 14, 15, 15 spots? And with the residential at six, we're only required to have 10, 11.
12.
So that leaves us with the balance for, for commercial, and we can pick where the locations are. So the, the building is three stories, the main building, and the first floor, like I said, it's commercial. And this, this exhibit is the exact same exhibit as the last time we were here. It's just the density and the unit count is changed. It's reduced, it's reduced in number for, for the units. So instead of the single-bed units, these are now two-bedroom suites. And that reduces the total number of parking based on the units. So each floor has three units, has an elevator, and it has handicap access to all the floors, all the units, and two, two stair towers for egress, with a connecting balcony in front. I'm just trying to see the, so with regards to the variances, the building height, the, the roof actually is in compliance with the, the roof, the building height requirement, but we're adding this, this parapet that exceeds it around it and wraps it, wraps around it and finishes off the top. The other part of the variance for building height is now also the elevator tower, which by code, you're required to have an overrun by code for the over travel for the elevator. And as part of it, we're gonna make, put the machine equipment up there so that from an aesthetic point of view, it actually anchors the corner, and it, it helps break up the, the linear facade on the, on the front there. Other than that-
So it's a southern style, a lot of corbels, will have a lot of plants, strawberries, like Ventnor Avenue currently, on, on each light stand. That'll be on each coast route in the, the location. This will be all commercial with, with windows and storefronts that turns. So when you're in the parking lot, this is the view of the parking lot. If you're on Ventnor Avenue, this is the view of the Ventnor Avenue.
I'm sorry.
So the Margate Marvel, we originally were doing units above, which we opt not to have now. So we are still gonna keep it commercial on the lower level and extend. It's not two more stories, at least one, to get it more in compliance, looking similar to the other structure with the corbels and the plants and things of that nature. I think it'll be a fabulous new addition to Margie, that's going from Margie Marvel, which at its time was a great building. It's just passed, it's, it's left, you know, it's left its back to speed.
That shows the second floor is an attic space.
Correct.
Correct.
It'll just be, you know, it'll, it'll look like there's a deck there to keep the southern looking like the other structure. It's gonna be one story higher, but it's just an appearance.
So the, so, so the other variance that concern is the, the signage. So the signage is gonna be in on the front here, and I, I-
We're gonna have signage on each unit.
On each unit?
And I think we're gonna, this, by the way, is getting all condoed out, so it'll be separate units. I'm gonna make this building four, and the Margie Marvel five, so five commercial, new commercial facilities, and we'll have six residential condos on top of it. That'll be two bedroom suites.
And Mr. Patterson, as you know, and we know, the board doesn't like anything on the building, and Steve would never allow this anyway, towels to be hung out oversized. We'll make sure the condo documents contain restrictions. We know the board is particularly concerned about the look, as is Steve. So whatever we ultimately do in the condo docs, prevent the building from looking anything but like this.
And, and the last part of it was the monument sign, which because of the commercial nature, is needed to help identify, because, because we're limiting the signage on the front to a small, narrow-
Where's our monument sign?
It's right here. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Our monument sign will be located here in the center of the parking. So Ventnor Avenue, our, this is our new structure we're building, this is where the short positions are in the past lives. Our monument sign will be here, just past that. So this way, when you're coming from Ventnor, Ventnor side towards Longport, you see the monuments, you can see who's in this structure. And also, when you come from Longport, you'll see a nice organized sign that, that'll-
Is this a sign like the Frankl's dentist office, that monument sign at Lancaster Avenue?
So this sign, the sign will look similar to this.
Yeah, it's a freestanding monument sign.
Yeah, okay. Oh, okay.
And then, of course, we're gonna have signage on the different stores within the complex, so if people know what-
But the only variance is a monument sign, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Question for the architect. No windows in the back of the building, correct?
Correct.
There's, there's a couple bedrooms with not one window in it. May I ask?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I'm thinking just this back.
That's, well, the side, I'm sorry, the side of the building.
The, the rear elevation does-
Yes. There's no windows in, in, in the whole side of the, the left side.
Right, they're all them back.
For the architect, is it a requirement to have any windows in the bedrooms or?
The bedrooms have, that are there are dens. They're not bedrooms.
It says bedroom right here on the front. Number one on the front, in the orange, yellow. That's a bedroom with no windows.
Correct. So in this room, this room will have a, a light, a skylight around the room, so it gets natural light.
But my, my point was the window for egress, exit.
So if egress is going in front, this one, we could put a window in on front, on Ventnor Avenue.
I thought there was one there.
You could.
Yes, and we would, of course. We just missed it. But we will add that. This unit can have a window here, which is in the parking lot side.
I was looking at the rear of the master bedroom in blue. There's no window there. But if there's not, if it's not required, I guess you don't have to put it.
Right, there's this door.
Mike, is it required, Mike?
Is it?
I, I, I thought it was required, but that's, that's more of a-
Didn't they require windows in bathrooms at all?
Hold, 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 stop. That's not, they're not asking for a variance.
Correct.
Right.
Right.
Right, so it's gallantino.
Right. All right, move on.
The only variances is the sign, the height, and something else.
And the sign.
What I would like to see is the parking detail.
The sign.
And just for the record-
Is it, is it the same as the, when Ponzio drew up?
Yes.
This is it?
So it's 15 spaces.
It hasn't changed?
No, it's not.
How about the exit onto Coolidge?
That has. We eliminated, grabbed two parking spaces, which I think is better.
You have two parking spaces there now?
Yeah, there's one here and there's one here.
Okay.
Two spaces there, which increases to 15.
And the Coolidge Avenue is cut off.
Correct.
All right. Just for the record, we are also seeking site plan approval.
Yes.
So that's not a variance, but it's a plan. Mr. Barnhart will talk to that in a second. But that's it for the architecture.
The, what is the height of this elevator shaft?
I have to get, it's been a while. It's eight feet above what the parapet was at 36. Right?
Eight feet to the roof, not to the pit.
Thirty-six to the corners plus the eight.
The ordinance allows two feet above the roof for an elevator shaft, so it's six-foot variance.
That would be six foot.
Yes, that would be correct.
Which I think would-
Well, 44 feet.
Total, right?
Yeah, 36 plus the eight.
You've got 36 and eight.
Yep.
What's eight foot? What is eight foot?
That's 110%.
That's eight. Sorry. That's for the elevator tower, right? It's coming right up.
None of this is being on the record, so speak into the microphone.
Just trying to figure out the exact height of the elevator shaft.
It's 36 to the top of the parapet, and it's another eight feet to the top of the elevator foot.
Forty-four feet on Zawaki's plan.
And Mr. Barnhart's just checking on the allowable height, just of the shaft.
It's 36 feet to the top of the parapet. That's another eight feet to the elevator.
We're just waiting for Mr. Barnhart.
We're putting on top of the elevator, the machine room to house the machines.
Understand.
We've got a difference here, John. There we go. I'm sorry.
We even had like a minute to what he means the-
Yeah, well, we're gonna, we're gonna take a break for two minutes while John's doing that.
Are we ready?
We're back in session.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, make a comment. We went over the plans, and since that elevator shaft is housing mechanical equipment, there is an allowance in the ordinance for up to 10 feet for mechanical purposes to exceed the roof of the, the roof height. So that additional height for that elevator shaft is not of variance in itself.
Just the 36 over 30 instead of 34?
The building itself, yes, two feet over, but for the mechanical equipment in the elevator shaft, that is an allowance, so.
Okay.
Barnhart, what else can you say?
He's the best.
You should have seen him last night. It was-
He's the best.
Brilliant. All right.
We're gonna pay him, maybe not Eric.
Probably not. It's been four months. So is, any more questions for Mr. Slaton?
Yeah. What's the square footage of the stores that you have?
I think, you said five stores? The total ground space is, we have 3250 and 1500. So what's that, 32, 42? So what's that, thirty-two, forty-two?
Forty-seven eleven.
Forty-seven eleven. Four thousand seven hundred and eleven commercial in the one structure, fifteen hundred in the Margie Marvel.
And do you have, I mean, this sign over here, is this just an idea of what's going to be there or?
No, it will be designed that way where it's like a road with nice-
What kind of tenants? You don't have an idea yet, do you?
No.
What tenants are going to be there?
No, we don't have, I have no idea.
You don't have anybody? You said that these are going to be timed.
Correct. We may opt to sell them off in order to pay the overhead of this project.
Individually, yes.
Pardon?
Individually.
Correct.
Well, somebody could buy three at once and put them together. I mean, there's the option of whatever they want to do with them.
But Steve owned all of them to begin with until he-
No, I understand, but it doesn't mean there has to be five. It means they can buy whatever they want, they could combine it into one big place, but it could do up to five units. Pardon me?
If there's firewalls.
Well, he's going to build it to who he has.
It's gallant, you know?
Yeah, that's, no, I understand, but-
Asking here?
No.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's, that's building stuff. That has nothing to do with what we're here for, which is the height variance and the sign variance.
Okay, move on.
Can I ask a question on the height variance?
Yes.
We need thirty-four, correct?
From the sidewalk.
For our variance, I'm, we're, thirty-four we're legal, thirty-six we got two feet. If you guys take the power pit off, make the building look ugly, you don't need a variance.
Correct.
But I'm not going to do that.
This is your classic, better alternative, Mr. Cristaldi.
Thank you.
Under the municipal land use law, I think that benefit greatly outweighs the debt.
I think that was his point.
Yeah. Mike and I have like, I can read that.
And Roger has, I don't know if he needs to go now, but very good reasons why it should be more than thirty-four, but we're still getting the variance, so we don't need to go into that.
If the board is okay, I'm going to put Mr. Barnhart on to give testimony from a planning perspective and to satisfy the criteria of the site plan. John, I don't think you've been sworn in yet, so just have Mr. Manos.
Sure. Mr. Barnhart, your name and business address for the record, please.
John Barnhart, office address four hundred East Dover Avenue, Atlantic City.
And please raise your right hand, you swear from the testimony you're about to give tonight will be the truth.
I do.
Thanks.
Mr. Patterson-
We've already accepted his credentials, we willingly do.
All right, John, just walk us through the site plan, please.
Sure. So as you guys already heard, this has been a long road and I almost fell off my chair when I found out that he was reducing this to six units. So this is, this is a project that we believe is exactly what the city of Margie is looking for in their commercial zones as a mixed-use type of development. The way the site, as was already described, lays out, we're proposing to have ingress and egress onto Vettner Avenue for vehicles, a parking field that contains fifteen parking spaces. One of those spaces will be access to Coolidge Avenue for the commercial use. The site itself will actually also additionally have a loading area, which is something that you don't typically see because there's just not room for it on the island, but it will have a small loading area which will allow for people to be able to move things into their, into their units or for the commercial spaces to take deliveries during the day. It's actually a great amenity for, to attract hopefully successful commercial tenants to the site. The, as I said, the circulation will come in off of Vettner Avenue and around back onto Vettner Avenue by two one-way driveways. The access to the units, as was already pointed out, is all from, is all from the front of the facility by way of two stair towers and an elevator, and the access to the marble building will stay as it is, as it is today. The layout of the site itself, we think works very well. We think that Mr. Baglevo's decision on how to renovate the marble building to make it appear as though it's a two-story structure, right now, if you drive by that structure, it looks squatty. It just looks inappropriately sized for its location, and this is the entry of the Margie. It's kind of the gateway, it's one of the, it's the first street in Margie by way of Coolidge Avenue. So by giving that structure some additional height, I think will be a dramatic aesthetic improvement to this site because that building does need some help. And then in the background, with that building being on the corner in the foreground, and then in the background, you will have the three-story structure, which creates a nice, a nice tiered look to the site. The way that Mr. Baglevo through his architectural team has laid out the site, it's going to look like a little mini shopping center. It's going to be, you know, it's right in the heart of your C, of your C-zone, and it's going to have that look and feel of a little mini shopping center with multiple tenants or maybe one large tenant, you know, depending on how things happen, which I believe, I believe, having worked on a number of commercial products in Margie, is what the community is looking for with regard to their commercial zones. As was described, we are, there are six units proposed, three units per floor above the commercial space in the larger structure. At the end of all this, after five months and three different hearing visits, we're down to three variances. Variance one is for the sign. A monument sign at this location is not permitted. We are a seventy-five square foot sign maximum. The location of the sign causes no sightline issues. It is important to a center like this, while you drive by, you see the building, generally you might know the address of where you're trying to go already, but coming in, seeing the signs, seeing the different tenants, and knowing where to go within the facility is important. It's important, information to give anybody coming in, whether they're walking along the street, driving along Vettner Avenue, or they're already on the site. So it's an important amenity to a commercial facility like this to have that sign. So we believe that it is definitely a variance that is warranted. The second variance that is, what has already been discussed at length is with regard to the height. It's just for the parapet. Mr. Cristaldi already made my argument in that regard. It is clearly a C-two or a benefit, a benefit situation. It's purely architectural, it's purely aesthetic. You take the parapet off, we don't need the variance, and the building looks ugly. So leaving the parapet on and having it, having the building designed as proposed is absolutely the best planning option in this case. And then the last variance necessary is with regard to the parking. We've come a long way with parking from where we started with this project. The six units, based on your zoning, calculate out to a requirement of eleven parking spaces. The residential site improvement standards for a garden apartment apply, which is one point eight spaces per unit. When you calculate the six unit, six units, it actually calculates the ten point eight spaces, which rounds to eleven spaces.
The two bedroom was two.
What that leaves is an additional four spaces that can be allocated toward the commercial.
Two bedrooms need two spaces, one bedroom needs one point eight spaces.
But Roger and I discussed this, that with a mixed-use building, it points you to the MF zone, which then, based on your ordinance-
Let's check on that first, because you still need it.
Either way, we need it, but it's my understanding that the, that the garden apartment standard still applies for a mixed-use building in Margie's code.
It does, but I think that statement says two for a, for a two-bedroom, one point eight for a one-bedroom.
But either case, we need it, so, yeah.
Two, two.
Two.
Okay, perfect. So six times two, so it's twelve.
So you need twelve spots.
So that still leaves three additional spaces that can be allocated toward the commercial, whether it be an employee or a customer coming to the site.
Now, if they have commercial, don't you have to have a handicap?
There's a handicap in the lot already.
Wow.
We got it covered. So the parking variance is for the commercial. We've established that we meet the standards for parking for the residential. The commercial needs a variance. As we know, throughout the community, there have been a number of projects that have, that have received variances for parking because the community recognizes the importance of the commercial, recognizes that many of your commercial operations are visited by way of foot, by way of bike, by way of other modes of transportation, depending on the uses, uses that go within them. And I think that the community has also recognized that if you force every commercial space, whether it be new or existing, to have the parking that the ordinance requires, you're going to have no commercial space because you just, because you just don't have the room in the community to provide the parking that the ordinance requires. So I think that it's, well, every job stands on its own and no project is precedent-setting. I think there's been kind of a policy set in the community with regard to commercial that getting that commercial space of over six thousand people on the site, that's meaningful commercial. I think that the deviation that we're requesting to not have, have parking for it is definitely a better planning alternative to allow, to allow the commercial to be constructed. If we were to try to create a balance that has, has more parking for the commercial, you just start losing commercial building space because you just don't have enough space on the ground to develop the site. So it's, it works, commercial, commercial, and I've made this argument before, commercial parking kind of is self-policing because if there's not enough parking in the area, the commercial uses, they fail. So the commercial users that are going to come to this site have to know that they, that they can support themselves here without the required parking at the location, or they won't come here. So I think that it does not create a negative impact on Vettner Avenue or any of your other commercial districts, but I think it has become commonplace in the community. So to wrap all of the variances together, I think that this is clearly a case of a C-two type of application where the benefits of the deviation outweigh any of the potential detriments. I think the benefits are, we're fortifying your commercial district with another, with an upgrade of an existing fifteen hundred square foot building and the addition of over four thousand square feet of new commercial space. We are providing six quality residential units on a site that by your density calculations support six point four, I believe is the number, units, so there is no density deviation requested here. So we are providing buildings that fit the scope and scale of, of the location and are proposed to be laid out in a manner that we think will, will create a very welcoming and slightly iconic look to coming into the city of Margie with, with a site that currently is not the prettiest in the world for the first thing that you see when you cross Coolidge Avenue. So we have, we promoted free flow of traffic with, with the parking that we're proposing. We've, we've promoted airlight and open space by having this open corridor center-type element, and we have provided a very desirable visual environment with this project. So we believe that there are multiple purposes of zoning that are advanced, that establish the positive criteria and meet the requirements for a flexible C-two. With regard to the negative impacts or the negative criteria, is there a substantial detriment to the zone plan? This project, and I've said it three or four times, in my opinion, this project is exactly what the zone plan wants for a site like this. So we believe there is no substantial detriment with respect to the, any substantial detriment to the public good. The site is kind of self-contained in its U-shape. It is providing the required trash that's necessary. It's providing the required security, the required lighting, it's meeting FEMA standards, it's providing landscaping where, where possible. All the site improvements will be, you know, current day standard site improvements. We will meet all the requirements of Remington Inverness Report and all of the comments in Mr. McLaren's report. We are, for the areas that we are adjacent to the one resident, the one residential structure, we are going to both landscape and have fencing in that area to help, to help create some privacy and separation from that structure. So we believe that the project has done its part to fit well within this location of the community because it is, it is a, a commercial project adjacent to residential. So for all those reasons, we believe there is no substantial detriment to the public good. So with that, we believe that we found the balance between the positive and the negative criteria. We've, we're an iteration probably four from the where we started with Mr. Baglevo, and I think hopefully you agree that we, we got where you want us to be.
John, you may want to explain how we've improved the traffic flow to three curb cuts?
Yeah, we are, we do definitely have-
Controlled intersections here on the corner.
We do definitely have a better traffic flow in and off of Vettner Avenue. That's correct.
So can I buy a story here?
Rest your case? Anything from the board?
Yeah, I think another thing that I really like is the-
Mike, Mike?
I like the loading area because, you know, a lot of times you see these commercial places, and it's not their fault, but they, the trucks come and they, they block the street, you know, because they can't, he can't get to the place. So I, I think that's a really big improvement to the area with the commercial.
I want to add on to that, that the evolution of this project, I applaud Steve on this. I think you really, I don't know if you had a, woke up sweaty one night, but-
Oh, dude!
The plant, the plant, you know, the balance that you have with the residential and the commercial is, is ideal. The last time, the issue was the density. I think you cured that by maintaining the commercial aspect, and I do, the monument sign is beautiful for this project. It is fitting for this project, having a monument sign, because I agree with John, you said, you need something to guide people in there because the building mounted signs, you won't be seen till it's too late. The elevator shaft, I think it adds, I think it adds beauty to the, to the building. It really strikes a, instead of a low flat roof, you have something there to break it up. And I think that this rendition, again, conceptually, from the second time, conceptually, you had it there, the density and parking was an issue. You cured all those issues, and I think this is a, something that, yes, you see when you come into Margie, this is what you're going to say.
Thank you, Ron.
It's a-
We're very happy with that.
You still hate me?
I only need to, once in a while, and if I have too many scotches, so, flop. As she's helping.
Right.
Start home like Roger.
Okay, okay.
Can have out of the woods.
Let's go. So are you, are you?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Question. Is there any landscaping or greenery aside from, I know you said like on the balconies about something, but is there anything?
Well, we're going to have landscaping here.
Do you have the microphone?
So we love landscaping. We don't like hardscape. So we will, I mean, it's drawn in here in small areas, but we will increase this as much as possible around this signage along this property line. This trash will be enclosed with gates and an overhang, so, and we'll also have some bicycle parking here for the, the commercial and the residential, so you don't have bikes laying all over the parking lot and tied up to the sides of the building, things of that nature. But we're going to, we're going to have a lot of planters, a lot of flowers, like we do up and down Vettner Avenue. Am I forgetting anything, boss?
We don't have the light posts.
Right. So we're going to, we're going to install light posts through here like we have on Vettner Avenue with the, with the hanging plants on each side. We want to bring other parts of Margie back down towards Longport, and, and so it looks continuous, you know, it looks the same in design as you go up through Vettner Avenue. And I'm aggressive enough to do the sidewalks in brick like we have up by castles and those elev-
Actually, that is a-
I think this, is it?
Yes.
Okay, well, I have no issue with that. We want to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, I'd like to open it up to the public. If someone would like to speak, come forward, state your name and address, and then wait to be sworn in, and then you can say your piece. So Ms.?
Charlotte Cohen, ninety-seven oh four Vettner Avenue.
Okay, Ms. Cohen, just got to get you sworn in. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Go.
We're right next to the desk, and I have a couple of questions and several concerns. First of all, how are the cars getting in and out of the parking lot and separating the spaces for the condos from the three for the businesses?
Yeah, go ahead. So I, I see the residential being most on these sides and having our commercial run here.
That's on Vettner?
This is Vettner Avenue. So you would come in, if you're commercial shopping, you would park here in these spaces, and we'll, we'll designate or assign spaces in these areas for the residential.
And then how would they exit?[1705.33]
So, they back out, and they pull around this way, and come out this way. So, currently, there used to be three curbs, this is a two-way driveway currently, so in and out, that's going to be changed to an out-only. This used to be two, one in and one out, which we're going to have it as just an end, because we want to minimize the impact on how this traffic's flowing out on Vettner Avenue, and we want to create a safe walk environment for people in this area.
Now, how about, so you're taking-
Could you speak into the microphone more, please? We need it for the recording.
You're taking, so now, there's only going to be, right now, there's three parking spaces.
Correct.
And we need permits for more than two hours. You're town, now, there's only going to be two.
Well, not necessarily. I don't know the exact measurements, but we had three curb cuts here, and we're reducing it to two, which would increase the parking on Vettner Avenue, not decrease it. But, we'd have to actually confirm the measurements. I don't know if this is a legal space in front of the Margate marble, as far as size. So, then you had two spaces, a space, and then you had the loading zone, and then the bus zone. But, we're hoping to increase the amount of on-street parking, if it's possible, but I just don't know the exact measurements for the on-street parking at this time. But, I can say it's less curb cuts than what was current, what's currently there.
I think we're really concerned between the traffic, the parking problem especially. We have a big problem, we have eight units, we have a huge problem of parking, we only have, right now, the three spaces in the front. You're talking about only three spaces for potentially five businesses, and there's going to be people driving there. It's not everybody's going to be walking, not everybody's going to be bicycling, and it's going to create more traffic, more dangerous crossing Vettner, and way more of a problem of parking, and that is a big concern for us. And it's a big, you're talking about a shopping center right next to our condo, it's going to make it seem, and right now, even from the pizza place next door to us, we have them coming onto our patios, and bringing their bikes into our, here, you're going to have even more, and it's, it is a big concern for us.
But, it's owned commercial. It's absolutely allowed, it's owned commercial, so that's what's supposed to be there.
Yeah, but we understand, before, it was a medical building.
Mm-hmm.
And it's the marble, we're fine with the marble. We're talking about potentially five, well, four businesses besides the marble, it's, and like a little shopping center.
Mm-hmm.
That's a lot different than the one medical office building and the marble.
Yeah, but the medical office building closed up, so, it's a commercial space, I don't know, when did you buy your condo there?
2005.
Okay, so that, I grew up in Margate, I've been here a long time, it's always been commercial there.
Yeah, so that's the difference.
You know, there's some gas stations around there, it's commercial, you can't, the medical building is gone, something's going to go there.
But, you're talking about, I mean, if at least it was just the commercial building, and then all the parking spaces were for the commercial buildings, it would alleviate the parking problem. But, now, you're talking 11 spaces just for the condos, and only three spaces for all this commercial. It wasn't like that before.
The medical building had parking, right?
Right.
At a number of spaces.
It had a lot of spaces, and the marble has a lot of spaces, a lot of spaces. And it goes down onto Coolidge, so it was a lot easier to go in and out.
Under that design, if you had that medical facility, and put six apartments upstairs, just like yours, that are next door, the eight, and you said to those six apartment owners, "Go park on the street," you'd have five times worse than the commercial space, utilizing only three or four spaces.
Yeah, can I ask a question? How many units are in your building?
Well, there's eight.
And how many parking spaces are provided?
None. We only had the three-
Was that the, was that the situation when you bought the place?
Yes, it was.
Well, this is a self-created hardship. I mean, your place comes with no parking, but you're complaining about not having parking. I don't understand.
We didn't have on-street parking, but at least we had, we get permits, and we had the three spaces. We had some spaces across the street on Vettner.
You understand your building couldn't be built today under, we do not grant variances for residential parking, absolutely not. He originally requested it, apparently it got through to him, you will never get that. Commercial parking spaces, as he said, and I think it's Sea Isle and Avalone and Stone Harbor, have finally come to their senses, there are zero parking requirements on the island for commercial properties. I don't understand why Margate doesn't do the same thing, that's not up to me, but if, as he said, if you, if everybody met the parking requirements, there would be no businesses in town. The island cannot support parking, and the island thrives with people getting there one way or the other. And it's been that way, I've been here since 1950, it's been that way since then. Should I say 1960, do I sound younger?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
But, it doesn't minimize, you know, the point that she's making is completely true. There is a substantial amount of parking issues at that end of town, I live there, too.
Right.
And, you know, adding the businesses with three spots is, you know, it's going to cause, it's going to cause more stress on the people that don't have parking. So, I understand the point, and I don't think, you know, we should just say, "Well, you bought a house like that."
No, I understand, but that building has no parking, and that's created the problem down there.
Right, but that's, you know, that's not her fault, it's the building's fault for essentially creating that parking.
It's buying next to the airport and complaining about it. You were parking when you bought it, had no parking spaces, so you know there's a parking problem.
And, but, I believe the complaint is that, okay, so now, we're putting five businesses in, where there used to be one that had parking. So, I mean, it's a justifiable point, and I appreciate that.
And it is, but with one thing to consider, Ms. Pelosi, and Roger and I have had this conversation many times, the whole city is underparked. There's no place in Margate where you would say, "There's plenty of parking there." Even the CVS parking lot, which is a big lot for Margate, or the lot next to Tomatoes, it's just, there's no parking on the island. And respectfully to the people who are underparked residentially, that's a problem that was existing when they bought those units, which is not to say that we don't care, but legally, they don't have parking, they're upset that a directly next door commercial unit won't have parking, because they're relying on other parking besides from their property. So, it's important to note, there's nowhere to get this parking if the city wants to encourage commercial development. It's just, one thing has to yield, and unfortunately for commercial, it's the parking. If you want commercial, you're not going to have parking. I don't think there's any business on the island that's correctly parked commercially.
Well, with all due respect, that may be true, but we don't want to make the situation any worse.
So, should we have no commercial down there?
No, we should limit the size of the amount of house that's going to be put in place.
It is limited. There's no variance for that.
Not enough.
Pardon me?
It's not enough.
What's not enough?
Not enough what?
Not enough parking to-
They are absolutely meeting parking, and they have three extra spaces. There is no variance here.
Respectfully, and I hope you're not basing your decision, that's a misstatement. The parking for the residential is excessive. We meet or exceed for residential parking. So, when you say it's not enough, what are you basing that on?
Well, combined businesses and the house.
But, that's not in your code. You know, you're bound by your own code. Your code says, residential parking this much, commercial this much. You can't, if you're going to base your decision on that, you're basing it on an incorrect assumption of fact and law, because, and Roger will tell you, the ordinance does not say combine the two, it's separately calculated.
And they've cut this down to, you say there's too many units, they've cut it down to what's allowed, so there is not too many units, they've-
What's the requirement for the commercial units, for spaces?
It depends on the use, so it's not 100% clear.
We start with two units.
Right.
I know, I know the residential makes, yeah.
It would depend on what the uses are, and then calculating it per, if it was a restaurant, it's based on the number of seats, if it's a office building, a dental office, it's based on the square, just different calculation.
I'd like to add that the street of Vettner Avenue here, I'm going to be requesting that the chief meet me here to review these parking spaces, because really, they're not utilized properly, and they can actually create more on-street parking if there's a redevelopment of loading and bus stop and things of that nature. It's excessive. This loading space right past their building for the pizzeria and bar, or whatever that is, liquor store there, is twice as big as it should be, actually. So, and I feel the pain, even when I, I get criticized for the way I park all the time, trust me, you go on Facebook, you'll see me. I got roasted this week for that, like, five-second, run in the store to grab my coffee and run out, and I was partially over on the crosswalk in the right. But, you try to manage with what we have, and we've always been able to manage. We manage, Down by Castles, we manage, Dino's, we manage, all these different areas, Down Beach Liquor, we manage. So, you know, we understand, but we live here, and this is the way it's always been, really.
To answer Remy's question about the commercial parking, it was calculated to be 30 spaces required.
Captain Ateez was 65.
Right, so, because it's not 30 spaces, because based on just the square footage?
200 square foot.
And the usage will be?
Well, it's based on the office, dental, medical, or retail sales, or real estate office, they're all the same.
Uh-huh.
One per 200 square foot.
Okay.
Anything else from the board?
There's-
Oh. Sorry.
No problem.
Hey, may I address it, then wait to be sworn in.
Alana Alexander, 9704 Vettner Avenue, Margate, New Jersey.
Ms. Alexander, please raise your hand, do you swear in front of the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
It's Alana Alexander.
Alana.
Okay.
Just a few questions, and no disrespect at all. I mean, you do beautiful work and whatever, and this is where I live full-time, and really, just have a couple of questions.
Right in.
So, the units that you're building, are you planning to rent them, or sell them?
If I'm successful enough to be able to manage to financially support this entire project, then I will retain them as rental.
That's what I thought.
But, if not, then the reason why we're conduing them off is if I fall short on capital, then we will find a need to sell off some residential units.
So, rental is weekly, monthly, yearly?
No, they would, they would be year-round tenants.
It will be year-round.
All my other rental, all my other rental properties, on the island and off the island, are year-round. I'm not a, I'm not a short-term rental, I'm not a seasonal rental, I like permanent people, year after year after year, and I control my environments very well on multiple use or multiple unit buildings.
Well, we are very concerned, because Margate is renting weekly, and it's just horrendous.
Well, I think they're putting things in place to get that more under control, if I'm not mistaken.
I hope so, but that's another whole story.
Yeah.
So, you will not rent less than a year?
I, we would not rent less than a season, but we're going to target year-round rentals.
That's different. Is it a year, or is it seasonal?
You could rent weekly, daily, monthly, yearly, so I should be able to do the same.
I know, but that's a concern to us.
But, personally, I prefer to have year-round, 50-plus persons in there.
Obviously, I mean, yeah, I would also, if I was a-
With one car per unit, instead of two cars per unit.
Well, that, I just think that this whole conglomerate is going to cause so many people, and so much traffic, and so many different people coming and going, and retail in a small corner of, it's just too much.
We understand your concerns.
It's too much.
So, we talk about the commercial spaces, if we decided we wanted to comply and give 30 spaces, we'd lose this whole structure down to about here. It's just not-
But, we don't need them all.
Or even more than that. It would be like me asking you to reduce your building from eight to four, and putting in parking.
But, our building is existing for, I don't know how many years.
I understand.
So, we're talking about something that's brand-new.
I understand.
And we're talking about retail, that's going to be coming and going, and who knows what you're going to rent to. Now, we're talking about condos that are going to be renting yearly, maybe month, maybe monthly, maybe weekly, coming and going, and you have a small corner that is a major, and there's going to be people coming and going, and cars parking where, I don't, listen, I live here all year-round, I'll find a spot for my car. I'm not talking about the spot, I'm talking about safety, people parking, people coming, people going, people coming in, people, you're going to have so many people coming in and out of that little square unit of retail and commercial, and I'm sorry, I'm very concerned about it.
This most likely is going to stay.
It would have been better if you would have just kept the two, the two homes.
Well, that wasn't in compliance with the ordinance.
It's too many people, it's too much going on.
I understand. So, you had a lot of people initially, when you bought your unit, when this was a medical facility.
No, we didn't.
It was a major medical facility.
It wasn't.
This had 20 spaces around it.
Right, and they came and they went.
Right, and the same thing's going to happen.
And they were gone at night.
Same thing's going to happen.
And they were gone at night.
This is not the appropriate form, where we're seeking.
Yeah, because you're, listen, I'm not technical, you're, if this is going to be a technical thing, this is not technical. This is about how I feel.
I wanted to have her say, she'll be done shortly, let her have her say, I don't want to cut her off.
I just feel that it's just, I am not being technical, because I'm not technical, I'm being realistic, and I think the whole thing is just too much for that corner. That's why I have to say.
Thank you.
And respectfully to the objectors, the site meets the requirements as a site plan. The Margate Municipal Master Plan encourages commercial development. The only way to do that is with a commercial development mixed use, which Mr. Baglevo has cut down substantially. He can't guarantee the future, who he's going to rent to, if he's going to rent, this is not the appropriate forum for that. We're here for three variances and a site plan, it's been established. If the neighbors have problems because they don't like the concept, we can't control that. I don't think we've ever heard someone coming in and saying, "This is great, someone's building something big next to me." Usually, it's the opposite, and there's a reason that doesn't fall within the municipal land use law. So, with respect to the neighbors, if they don't like the concept, that's unfortunate. If they have a real question Mr. Baglevo can answer, we'll answer it, but-
Well, real in that it applies to the three variances that he's asking.
Correct.
And that's what, and maybe I didn't make myself clear, I didn't want to be rude to anybody, but we are here for those three variances.
The idea-
We can't tell him what kind of commercial, how many units, he fits, he's put it in within the law, except for two foot on the ceiling and a sign.
We sometimes hear this idea of, "It's just too much," but that's not a cognizant objection to any of the three variances that we're seeking. The development fits within the site, it meets the setback requirements, it meets your bulk requirements. Short of a 100% compliant application every time, the board's here to grant variances, if they're justified, we've heard testimony that they're justified. So, again, we certainly understand the neighbor's concerns, but we can't just answer every question and say, "We're not going to build this," because as they put it, it's too much.
Come forward, state your name and address, and then be sworn in.
My name is Michael Cohen, I'm a resident of 9704 Vettner Avenue. It is-
Stop.
Mr. Cohen, please raise your right hand.
Certainly.
Do you swear in front of the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I do. While parking has been a focus from the residents, and I understand that, since we were residents in that condo since 2005, I think it's important not to just brush away the kinds of concerns that were expressed by my neighbor. It's not a matter of aesthetics, it's not a matter of saying, "We don't like the shade of roofing that you're going to put on, we don't like," it's not that at all, because traffic translates into safety. And as we saw on the drawing that the builder put up, Vettner Avenue is a very busy place, we're going to have, once it's improved, that lot is going to have, to use his own words, "Coming and going." Traffic will be increased, parking will be lessened, and we're concerned about it for two reasons. One is not just a matter of convenience, one is even our own safety. When I had my family here recently to visit, they had to walk across what would be a very busy area to get to Coolidge, to get to the beach. All of that translates into safety. What I would suggest is that somewhere here, I'd like to see a discussion started, and maybe with the builder and us is the way to do it, because I've never spoken to the builder about anything that was supposed to be considered before this project was developed. Perhaps there's another way, and I'd like to just very briefly state one possibility that I thought of, and I'll be very brief, one possibility that I thought of, to address the parking situation for us, just the eight of us, a small group, not talking about fixing the parking problem for the entire island at all. Perhaps, as is done in Philadelphia, when you are a resident of certain areas, you get a sticker that enables you to park in designated areas that non-residents can't park in. Perhaps the kind of two-hour limitation that we've seen every year that we've been here, perhaps that could be eliminated for us. Now, I know it sounds like special consideration, the reality is that when you say perhaps that our condo really shouldn't, shouldn't have been built-
No, I said it wouldn't be allowed to be built under today's regulations.
I understand, I understand. But, maybe the reality from my point of view, and this will be my last statement, it's here. We- We've, we've lived here since 2005. The only reason, and we've discussed, my wife and I have discussed this repeatedly. The only reason we would ever consider leaving because we love our location, we, we love the services that we get and all of that. The only thing that would make us go somewhere else, excuse me, the only reason to go somewhere else would be the fact that we don't have adequate parking. If there were some adjustment to our parking needs, that would be great. Thank you for your time.
As far as you're concerned, excuse me, what you're asking for, you need to go to the chief of police. We don't handle that. We can't even discuss it. It's not under us. But if you want something like that, the chief of police is who you would talk to.
Okay, is there precedent for that in your, in your knowledge?
I don't know. He would know that because that's his department. But, but he's the one that would tell you if there could be special parking or whatever. He, he controls it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have something for John.
Wait, I need, is there anyone else from the audience? Okay, public portion's closed. Anything from the board?
John, we have a 24-foot curb cut on Vettner Avenue and a 12-foot curb cut, right Steve? Why do we need a 24 if we, we reduced it to 12 and 12? One's, one way is in and one way is out, correct? So they're the same. One's in, one's out. If we, if we reduce the 24 to 12 foot, that would decrease another spot on the street. It would give them another space on the street.
I did, I actually did look at that. Greg, the issue is with the way the parking lays out. You've got this first space right here, and I, I have to have, I have to have the 24 feet behind it to be able to back in and out of that space properly, which then essentially dictates the width of the curb cut.
Okay.
I mean, I, I could, in theory, I guess I could slide just to cut itself over a little bit. What are you, what are you trying to achieve? One more, one more?
Well, yeah, if there's 12 foot and we, we end up with 16 foot, that's, that's a full space.
Well, but it's really not.
Eight months, 22 on the street.
It would need to be 22, and then when you're, when you're next to curb cuts like that, you really need a little gourd area to make it safe.
Well, when you, when you go from 24 to 12, you pick it up 12 feet.
Are we picking up any parking spots?
I don't think you would pick up a space, is what I'm saying though.
Well, between the curb cuts is not a space right now.
Correct. And, and as I said previously, I have already started the process to speak with the chief of police to try to get some kind of better control and, and, and because we live here, and I live at 9600, and on Thursday through Sunday, she doesn't move her car because you're not, you won't get a parking spot. Inside, we have indoor parking so I can park my car. So we, we feel your same pain. We deal with this daily. So we are going to try, and, and I'll try to even speak with the chief to involve other people in the community to try to improve the area. We talked about adding some spaces on Coolidge. They're looking into things. They're looking at numbers. They're looking at traffic counts, things of that nature at this time. And you're still subject to Atlantic County approvals for this application. Anything else on the board? Okay, Leo, would you?
One last thing, I'm sorry.
John, you did confirm that you'll comply with all the engineer's comments?
Yes.
Looks like a bunch of waivers in there. I don't know if you want to, but that's fine. Engineer's cost estimate will be one of them.
John, that's fine because Atlantic County is going to require that anyway.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the cost estimate.
Do you have a copy of their report?
Yeah, the only, there actually, there are, there are... Two waivers that I would like to request are traffic impact statement. We're going to go through, I mean, the county will look at the, at the traffic pattern and they dictate the, the driveways anyway, so they'll be reviewing that.
It's A14.
That is correct, A14.
I'd say A2 also. It's like you are providing contours.
No, we will be providing that. I, I, I need to, I need to do that in order to make sure the grading works correctly.
A4?
We will be, we will be providing that as well. Yeah, traffic impact statement is the only one I'm seeing, Roger, that we would like to request a waiver from.
Fair enough.
I just had one other thought. So there's some medical buildings, right, still in that area, right? Like Horizon, Eye Care, I don't know what else, that actually have parking? Is there some way to use that parking lot, maybe on weekends for the businesses that are open at your location, just because the weekends are the worst, and I don't think anyone's using, I don't know, using those, you know, medical facilities on the weekends?
Oh, I can tell you, I used to own the Jamaican crazy location, and behind that, we had 18 parking spaces. That, that medical facility would eagerly approach me to lease that whole lot for every day of the week. They, they're, they're, they're under spaces for what, for what they have in that facility. So, I mean, we could put a plan together to approach them. I, I think a lot of the neighbors used to approach the Margate Marble Building and try to make arrangements to park after hours, things of that nature. But we, we're not sure what residential, commercials, businesses are going in here. If this facility shut down at six o'clock, then we would have no issues with people parking there through the night. But I just don't know this, I can't limit us to that because we don't know what tenants.
No, I just thought of like some way to alleviate the parking issue.
When I had two cents playing, I approached the city. I approached CVS. CVS said, no, our insurance will not allow it. We cannot allow parking for something they can't control.
We can always ask, as Steve said.
You can ask, but again, that's not an issue before the board, so.
No, I just wanted to put it in there.
I understand.
Take the parking into consideration, that's all.
Good idea. Leo?
All right. This is a motion for the filing approvals. There's a preliminary and final major site plan approval required for the development. There's three variances. The height, 34 feet from the sidewalks permitted, they're at 36 feet, so about two, they're the two foot height variance. For the commercial parking, based on a 200, one space per 200 square feet, which would apply, I think, just about every use except the restaurant, 30 spaces are required. And it looks like they have three commercial spaces proposed, given the excess on the residential. And then the monument sign is not permitted, and they're proposing a monument sign of approximately 75 square feet. There's the one checklist submission waiver for the traffic impact, impact study. The conditions, I'll note that they're going to consolidate the lots, subject to any outside approvals. I assume Roger needs compliance plans.
Yes.
And then I'll note many representations made during the course of the hearing, and then I'll note anything else in Mr. McCarn's report unless otherwise addressed, recognizing that some of this stuff was written based on 14-unit developments and might, might not apply.
I'll make a motion. Richard Patterson?
Concerning the height variance, I, I think it's for aesthetic purposes. I see no interference with anything in the area from having that and making it a better looking building for the city. The monument sign, I think, is necessary. I think that's a safety issue, that people driving down the street can see what's in there without jamming on their brakes, stopping, turning in, turning out. The parking, as I said before, I don't understand our rules because it is not physically possible to have the required parking that is in the ordinance. We have repeatedly, for the sake of commercial development, we are not trying to turn this town into Ocean City or any other town that has, we're trying to maintain a minimum amount of commercial to support a year-round population. I've been on this board since 2007. This is the best commercial application I have seen. There is no variance for density, which we usually have. There is no variance for, for parking. It is fitting in with what that design is allowed to have according to the master plan. It fits in with the intent of the master plan. This plan to me is a blueprint for two or three large commercial properties that are currently for sale. And from the word I have from developers, this is going to cut their projects in half because they can use this as a blueprint for what is going to be allowed. No density variance, no residential parking variance, fitting in with the commercial use. This is a commercial area. With that in mind, I congratulate Steve. I've seen his two other plans, which to me were a disaster. And to come around and provide to completely get rid of the two biggest variances and to come in with what I see are minimal variances for the height and the parking and the, the commercial parking, not residential. We would never give a variance for that. And the monument sign, which I think is necessary, I wholeheartedly approve this application.
Michael Cristaldi?
Wow, how do I follow that? I mean, you about said everything, Rich. I think good luck with the project. I think it's a really good project. I feel bad for the neighbors for the parking, but I mean, the whole town is a parking problem. And if anybody knows anything about Philadelphia and the restaurants on Packer Avenue, they have zero parking. But you've got to stand in line to get into a restaurant up there. So good luck with the project. I vote yes.
Craig Palmisano?
I, I agree with Roger's assessment when he said it's a perfect balance of residential and commercial for the area. Vettner Avenue is a commercial street. We want to keep it that way. You came in at first with two 4,500 square foot units with swimming pools in the back, and that was outrageous. And you, you conform to what we want. The commercial aspect is, I don't know what you're going to put in there, but I don't expect it to be that robust as far as commercial. We, in, in the past, we've, we've given commercial okays to restaurants with 150 seats restaurants for captain and these, for instance. And there was only seven parking spaces for 150-seat restaurant because it's, it's not available. There's nowhere to put it. And we didn't want to X out the commercial. The, the sign out front is, is a, is a wonderful sign. We have one at Lancaster Avenue that we approved is six foot high, and, and people complained about it a little bit, but it's a beautiful sign. And, and there's no problem with it. And the height, the height variance is, is okay for the elevator room. And the major site plan is, I'm okay with that. You know, the, you moved it down to six units with parking for residential. And I think, I think it's a good plan. I like, I like the way it looks, and I think it's going to be great in Margate. I approve.
Rami Pelosi?
I have no issue with the height and I have no issue with the sign. And I appreciate your efforts in redoing the plans and preserving the commercial area. And I think that is very important for Margate to keep commercial because we don't want to lose all of that. So I really like the plan and I really like the design, and I do think that Mr. Baglevo will do his best efforts to find some way to alleviate the commercial parking issue. I am happy with the parking provided for the residential condos, and I'm pleased that they're smaller units. And I don't think that's going to cause an issue for parking. And I do live in the neighborhood, and I know you do as well. So I think, you know, maybe some efforts to alleviate that parking, I'm sure will be made by you. And I'm, I hope the commercial properties can be successful and thrive, and I think it is going to be a nice project for Margate. So I approve.
Stephen Jusacki?
There's an old saying, to a hammer, everything's a nail. And it seems like to developers, every lot is a residential property. And from the very beginning, from the very start of this, it seemed like there was a big residential push for the, for this, use of this property. And it got reduced until what it is now. But it's still, I think the focus was to build residential. We need businesses, and we need things like the, your ice cream stores and your coffee shops and your bagel shops, bicycle repair shops. This is what keeps a community flowing. This is what is a community. We need these things. Parking is a huge problem. And, and as I said before, I don't think we need to exasperate the problem. I think we need to have solutions for it, and we need to create more, not make less. The stores, I hope that the stores that you bring in are going to satisfy the needs of the community and the people. Neighborhoods like coffee shops. They like being able to walk a short distance. They like being able to have a nice place to sit. And hopefully, maybe somebody will do something for kids because we really need something for the kids to do. But I see this as a loss of a good, huge space that we can use for like a nice restaurant, something like Santucci's where we can, but that's not my business and that's not what I'm here for. But I think these are issues that really need to be looked at. I cannot approve this. My vote is no.
Michael Rafiu?
Wait, can I hear the reason again? I didn't hear what the reason was.
We have a clean slate, and he could have built a building that could have worked within the parameters.
But this isn't the parameters.
This is not, this does not fit in.
Okay, I understand. I'm sorry. I shouldn't interfere with your vote. Go right ahead. Thanks.
Michael Rafiu?
As everybody knows, this is my first meeting, but from, from what, what I've learned here tonight and gathered from the information that was presented, I think it's a great project. I grew up in Margate as well. I think, I think the building and the project will really improve that, that corridor, that entranceway into Margate from Longport. Other than that, I don't really have anything to add to, to my fellow board members, but with that, it's, it's a yes for me.
You are coming back, correct? This isn't scared you off, Mike?
Not yet.
Good, many nerves.
Michael Richmond?
Yeah, I don't have any problem with this sign. It makes perfect sense. You're going to have the stores along the side. Nobody's going to be really able to see it except for the first one, what, what the business is. The height is not adding any living space. It's just going to make the building a lot more attractive. And, you know, we've had other votes where some, I'm not going to get into it, but commercial is important to the area. And I think that Steve will make sure that the commercial businesses that he brings into that area are going to benefit the area. So I'm going to vote yes.
The application is approved with six in favor and one opposed.
At this time, I'd like to ask if there's any other public participation for any matter? You were already sworn in, were you?
No, not yet.
Oh, okay, then name and address and...
No, I have a question, so I just...
This is just general public discussion?
General public.
No, just get your name and, name and address.
Jody Singer, 9510 Amherst Avenue, Margate.
Okay, I don't need to swear in for both.
Okay, it's just, it's a general question. I live traveling down Jefferson Avenue, which is one of the main kind of gateways into the Marine District. The intersection of Jefferson and Winchester, there's a stop sign that you cannot see. It's a very dangerous intersection. A lot, I've, I've witnessed many, the stop sign is at a height where the trees...
You can't see the stop sign.
You can't see the stop sign. I have, now, this is why, you had mentioned if the city owned, if the city owns the tree, then you would be responsible if the owner of those houses owned the tree. Last year, I was witness to like, I can't even tell you how scary because there's, it should be a four-way stop sign. It's not. I actually wrote to both owners and asked them if they can cut the tree because you can't, you can't see the stop sign until you're on the stop sign.
I know exactly.
You know what I'm talking about?
I know the corner. I know the exact problem.
It's very intimidating. So who do I talk to about that?
The chief of police.
Okay.
Yeah, the chief of police.
Yeah, so I, that's what, they did cut it back last year, but then it grew again.
I understand, but you have to have access to that stop sign. It has to be seen. I know it's horrible, but we can't do anything about it.
That's what I want, that, that was my question.
But Roger can.
Roger?
Roger will take care of it with remember.
Thank you.
All right. All right.
I appreciate it.
You had to sit through all that to ask that question. Thank you.
Jefferson and Winchester.
Jefferson and Winchester.
Jefferson and Winchester.
Headed toward, yeah, headed towards the ocean.
Heading towards Jefferson.
Towards the ocean.
Like during the winter, there's no leaves.
Yeah.
You can kind of see it.
Right.
And it's so dangerous.
I understand.
If you've been, you know, and I traveled every day and it's...
And it's hard to see the traffic coming there, too.
You can't see it. So much construction, trucks...
Jefferson's one way towards the bay.
Towards the bay? Washington Adams. Jefferson, I'm sorry, towards the bay.
Yeah, this is going towards the bay.
Yes.
And Winchester, which is going that way.
Yes.
It should be a four-way, but if it can't be...
Can't be. You only need two stops.
Yeah.
So you can get rid of that tree or do something about it, just so we can see the stop sign.
See what we can do.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Public portion's closed. Anything else? Jimmy's not here to jump in with a, can we adjourn? So would someone like to make a motion to adjourn? Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Craigie in favor, rejoining?
We have to.
Adjourn.